Thank you. Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swanson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have this evening a form of meeting agenda.
Agenda, there we go. Thank you. Now this thing is a little bit loud, I think. I don't know, Jennifer, you can turn this down a little bit. Seems a little loud. Thank you. We've got a form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second to approve the form of meeting agenda. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And then the next portion of the agenda deals with consent agenda items. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Members Sprague?
Yes, I do, your honor. C, G, and L, please.
C, G, L. All right. Anyone else? All right, very good. With the exception of four C, G, and L, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Are you saying L or O?
L. Animal Control, CSO, Bargaining Unit.
And then I'd like to-
Member Swanson?
Like to note that we have a few updated resolutions that were on there, just so that everyone knows that I went through them. I didn't see anything that caused me concern, but just so you know.
All right.
On FH-
Well, let's get the balance of the consent agenda.
No, that's, we already passed these, so it doesn't really matter. They've already been-
We haven't voted on the consent agenda yet.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Second?
We already seconded it.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor for approving the consent agenda, with the exception of C, G, and L, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And now four C. Members Sprague?
Thank you, your honor.
That is the Cry Wolf False Alarm Tracking and Billing System, an update. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chief. Just wanted to get a little more information on the system and also the need that's out there about how many calls, false alarm calls are we getting a year and so on, so.
Yep, very good questions. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The Cry Wolf Alarm System is a module that we were originally going to purchase when we changed to a new RMS CAT system. The way we do things now is we write on a little sheet of paper and we leave it in someone's door, and it's subject to human error, so we're not getting a very good tracking system. A lot of people are back and better from getting free alarms, or free alarm response because the paperwork gets lost or not entered correctly, so forth and so on. Yearly, I don't have the number right offhand, but I'm, an estimate would be about probably 150 alarms a month that we're responding to would be a good estimate. There is a, now a fee for the first time alarm, too, of $25. What this, what the system will allow us to do is when the officer, when the call is received and dispatched, we get all the information from the caller, is sent to the officer, and then is sent to our billing clerk. So there's no room for human error in there. It's all automated.
And so, okay, so 150 alarms a month. I'm just looking at the quantity of the, of the calls, and then the software's 31,000 bucks.
Yes.
So how did you, how did you?
What we do now is, like I said, we have one person where one of her primary responsibilities is just data entry from alarm billing, where she enters the data, types up bills, sends it out, receives the bills, and it's quite time consuming. So over a three to five year period, it should, if you amortize that out, it should pay for itself.
And just because lost staff time?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for the chief on this matter?
That clarification, I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion of second on four C. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Next matter that was pulled was four G, which is the second reading in the ordinance on the Arts and Culture Commission. Members Sprague?
Yes, sir. I have a few minor changes. In E, we say recommend arts and culture initiatives, but the, in the rest of the document, we're using artistic and cultural as a convention. So I suggest we change that to artistic and cultural. And then we also use Edina throughout the document, not City of, so I would strike City of in B and G. So it just says Edina. My last edit was in the last section of Committees and Working Groups, changing the second sentence from the passive form to active. So the first sentence is, "The commission shall establish and appoint members to a public art committee which shall be charged with implementing a public arts program in the city." And then the second sentence would be, "The commission shall, by majority vote, approve the chair of the public art committee."
Okay. Any other changes? Do you move it with those changes?
I, I will move it, yes.
A second.
All right. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And the next matter pulled from the consent agenda was four L, which deals with the proposed adoption of the bargaining unit contract for the animal control officers and the CSO. Members Sprague?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Yes, in the collective bargaining description here, they talk about a change to the cap on vacation time as well as, I'm trying to find that, that piece of paper. Thank you. As well as floating holiday leave versus our standard vacation leave. Can, can somebody give a brief description of those two items?
Lisa, do you want to come forward? Lisa Schaefer, our Human Resources Director?
How about one of the podiums?
Mayor, Councilmember Sprague, the, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? So the floating holidays?
The first one, just talk about the cap on vacation hours, where, what we do now and what the new standard would be. And then secondly, talk about our change to floating holiday leave.
Sure. The transition to the new cap, this was an initiative that we had started last year. So in our previous three bargaining units, contracts that we had negotiated with Police, Fire, and Local 49, this is the new language that we agreed to. So before that, there was not a numeric hard cap. It depended on a mathematical formula that was related to your previous years of service. And so some employees were well above the 480 cap, so this was a way to budget on a more conservative way going forward.
In general, the labor relations strategy in this, on this particular item is to cap our, our long-term financial exposure for paid leave when employees terminate.
So we're just managing a legacy cost now?
We are, and we're capping those legacy costs.
Okay, good.
There is actually only one employee in this bargaining unit that it applies to because we have only one full-time employee in this bargaining unit. The floating holidays, that was actually a part-time employee benefit that was negotiated over the last several contracts that has been in there as far back as, from the contracts that I've reviewed. And what this actually does is set a specific hour amount instead of a day. So it says that the part-time employees will receive 16 hours per year. It's just an easier way to track. Previously, they received two days, which depending on their shift could have been eight hours a day or 10 hours a day.
Okay, good. So we're just standardizing the definition?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Good. Other questions for Lisa Schaefer with regard to this proposed contract?
Thank you.
I'll move the matter.
All right.
Second.
We got a motion of second on four L, which is the approval of the 2013-14 Union Contract for Teamsters Local 320 Public Safety Animal Control and CSOs. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And now we are going to move to the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. And the first proclamation in front of us this evening is the proclamation involving Preservation Month as May 2013. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas see, save, celebrate is the theme for National Preservation Month 2013, co-sponsored by the Edina Heritage Preservation Board and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Edina, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Edina to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second to adopt the proclamation designating May 2013 as Preservation Month? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Ms. Repia, Joyce Repia from our staff, I'm going to hand this to you, and you may have some comments, or have some other folks here that may want to make some comments.
Preservation Month is really an exciting time for the Heritage Preservation Board, and it's a time for us to celebrate Edina and everything, the fabric of our community and what makes it so special. And one of the ways that we do that is for your next item that you have on your agenda. Maybe you'll want to introduce that.
All right. Well, we have, we have a Heritage Award presentation coming up, and I've got the plaque up here. And I expect, Joyce, that you're going to, you're going to speak to this matter, but it is an award that is given out annually, and in 2013, the award is going to be, going to the Southdale Center. And I see Ben's here, and-
That's right.
And you may want to walk up with Ms. Repia and stand next to her while she makes the presentation.
Well, fine. You're more than welcome, and you can make sure I've got these photos straight, too. The Edina Heritage Award is presented annually during Preservation Month to recognize outstanding preservation, rehabilitation, or restoration of properties in Edina. This year, the Heritage Preservation Board is pleased to present the award to Southdale Center, recognizing recent renovations that have embraced the center's original mid-century modern architecture, as well as the preservation of original artwork. Southdale Center needs no introduction in the city of Edina. However, some may not be aware that the center has the distinction of being the first regional climate-controlled mall in the country. Southdale's property was originally farmland, and in this photograph, you can see France Avenue on the upper right-hand corner, and you see the water tower that is there today. But just to the left of that, you'll see the gravel pit, which is no longer there. And on the, on the bottom part of the photograph, you're going to see West 66th Street. This photo of the mall does not include the J.C. Penney's addition. There are no parking ramps, and the Dayton's store, which is now the Macy's store, had not been built at the time. And what's interesting about Southdale Center is, at the time, it was very controversial. But it was one of these structures that if you build it, they will come, and we certainly did, didn't we? The grand opening took place with much fanfare on October 8th, 1956, serving as a prototype for suburban malls all over the country. Designed by renowned architect Victor Gruen, his intent was that the regional shopping center must, besides performing its commercial function, fill the vacuum created by the absence of social, cultural, and civic crystallization points in our vast suburban areas. Southdale is owned by Simon Properties, who since purchasing the center in 2007, has undertaken the task of repopulating vacant spaces, and most recently completing a massive renovation project. Gone are the dated teal and gray colors of the 1990s that you see in this photograph, replaced by many of the mid-century aspects that hearken back to Victor Gruen's design, including wood finishes on columns, ceilings, and railings, and wonderful light fixtures. And this is my favorite light fixture. You'll have to stroll through the mall and see if you can find it. They also included many areas of, with seating area peppered throughout for people to just take a load off their feet, visit with their neighbors, and just, again, have a great sense of community. Simon Properties did take the needs of the community in, in mind when they were redesigning their spaces by also providing a new centrally-located food court, which is now off of J.C. Penney's. And a children's play area for busy little ones and tired parents has also been provided. When built, Southdale was 800,000 square feet in area. Fifty-seven years later, it now boasts 1.3 million square feet and retains little of the original structure, with the exception of its central core, the Garden Court. The original design included a large, a large art collection. However, over the years, pieces such as the birdcage and the fish pond have been lost. However, we are so fortunate that within the Garden Court, Simon Properties has retained the two-story Golden Tree sculpture by Harry Bertola, and you see that in the photograph there, as well as, this is the second story of that tree sculpture. A plaque has also been added to the sculpture. So I Googled Harry Bertoya, and wow, what a, he's just has so much art out there in the United States. It would be fun for you two to take a look and see how lucky we are to have one of his pieces in our mall. The wall clock on the west side of the second story is also original to the mall, and this was the meeting point for many families who would spend the day at the mall. That was before the day of cell phones, but still, it's great to see that they have included that in the design. This is a photograph of the Garden Court as you see it today, and you see the, the Golden Tree sculpture to the right, and on the, the west wall to the left, you see the original clock. And there's a third architectural element that was original to the mall, and that was the clear-story windows you find on the upper level on the east side. These windows do a wonderful job of providing natural light into that central core area. And here is another really great picture of that clear-story window that is so important. The Preservation Month theme, see, save, celebrate, provides the perfect opportunity for the city to celebrate Southdale Center and recognize renovations that have revitalized the center's original mid-century modern design, as well as applaud Simon Properties for their sensitivity to the remaining art pieces located in the Garden Court. Interestingly, we are not the only ones celebrating the importance of this local treasure. Southdale Center will be highlighted in a PBS special program entitled "Ten Buildings That Changed America," airing this Sunday evening, May 12, at 9:00 PM on Channel 2, which is our local TPT station. Here is a promotion for that show explaining that this program tells the story of ten American architectural marvels, including a state Capitol designed by Thomas Jefferson, the original indoor shopping mall, none other than Southdale in Edina, the first airport of the jet age, and a futuristic concert hall. You may not be familiar with all of these buildings, but they probably shape the way you live, work, shop, and play. Host Jeffrey Baird takes a journey across America and inside these ten groundbreaking works of art and engineering. Quite an honor for Southdale. This will be a do-not-miss program. And with no more ado, I'd like to now present the 2013 Heritage Award to Southdale Center, and we are so fortunate, as the mayor said, to have Ben Martin here to accept the award.
All right, Ben, I'll come down. Come on up here, congratulations. Joyce, you want to come up? So, Ben, this reads, 2013 Edina Heritage Award Presented to Southdale Center. Your address, May 7, 2013. Recognized for renovations embracing the center's original mid-century modern architecture and artwork. So again, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
There you go. Okay, good. Thanks. Thanks, Joyce. Nice presentation. The next proclamation in this portion of the agenda deals with little Abigail Taylor, and it involves Abigail Taylor Remembrance Day, May 24, 2013, May 24 being her birthday. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Abigail Rose Taylor was the beloved daughter of Catherine and Scott Taylor and the spirited sister of Grace, Christina, and Audrey. And whereas Abigail Taylor suffered a traumatic injury June 29, 2007, while she was playing in a wading pool at the Minneapolis Golf Club, and passed away March 20, 2008, less than a year later, due to complications from her injuries. And whereas Abigail Taylor's accident increased public awareness of pool safety and led this, led to legislative change. In December 2007, President George W. Bush signed federal legislation that provides incentives for states to adopt comprehensive pool safety laws. And whereas Abigail Taylor's legacy is that both, is that both the state and federal governments have approved measures making swimming pools safer for all children. Now therefore, we, the Edina City Council, do hereby proclaim her birthday, May 24, 2013, as Abigail Taylor Remembrance Day, and call upon all citizens of Edina to remember Abigail and her indomitable spirit. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second to adopt the Abigail Taylor Remembrance Day proclamation. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Do we have anyone here from the foundation? Okay. We'll make sure this gets to the, to the foundation and to her parents as well. Thank you. And the next proclamation involves National Public Works Week. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives.
We're one ahead.
Oh, the kids' one was first? Okay, excuse me. All right. National Kids to Parks Day. There we go. Had them sorted in the wrong way. Proclamation, National Kids to Parks Day, Saturday, May 18, 2013. Whereas May 18, 2013, is the third National Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas National Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades. And whereas Edina encourages children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension. And whereas National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And now therefore, I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of Edina, do hereby proclaim to participate in National Kids to Parks Day. We urge Edina residents to make time, May 18, 2013, to take children in, into their lives and into a neighborhood state or national park. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation? Got a motion of second to adopt the National Kids to Parks Day proclamation. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Ms. Catry, are you going to accept this and talk a little bit about National Kids to Parks Day? Not too far away, no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. As Mayor Hovland mentioned, Saturday, May 18, is National Kids to Parks Day, and we're encouraging all of our Edina residents to get out into one of our neighborhood parks, regional parks, or state parks. And we're hosting a little event in four of our parks, Roseland, Wooddale, Centennial Lakes, and Garden Park. We're having, in each of those parks, a healthy hornet poster, and we're inviting residents to go out and find the healthy hornet, take a photo with that poster, and then post it on our Facebook page, or enter the Images of Edina contest. So we encourage everyone to get out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then finally, the proclamation involving National Public Works Week, and that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways and public buildings. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel whose staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Edina, do hereby proclaim the following week of May 19 to the 25, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second to adopt the National Public Works Week proclamation. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Director Whoel, are you going to receive this? Who's going to, oh, okay, Brian Olson's going to receive it. I didn't see Brian back there. Thank you. There you go. Good. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what's been happening in Edina? You had an event, I think, last Saturday when we were in a retreat over there at-
Yes, we did. I just wanted to take this opportunity, Mayor Hovland and the members of the council, to thank you for providing this proclamation tonight, and tell you a little bit about, in my 20 years of experience with public works, I have the definition of public works, it's very difficult for each community to define what public works is. I can tell you that with over 19,000 communities across the nation, every one has a little different model. And Edina has an incredible public works department. We have learned that the residents, in my last 12, 12 months here, I've just recently been here for the last year, I've learned that Edina residents are, demand good quality service, and that the Edina City Council has provided us with the resources necessary to provide those quality services. Our mission statement is that we provide high-quality public service and make Edina a great place. Through highly-trained and experienced staff, we provide current, accurate information, efficient, effective resource management, sound infrastructure, timely response to emergency infrastructure needs, and safe and living working conditions. This results in an enhanced quality of life and a satisfying experience for living, working, and playing. Thank you for approving this proclamation tonight and allowing me to represent your public works employees, which in my opinion, are the heart and soul of every public works department, and for providing us the support and tools necessary to provide the absolute best service that we can. It's been a pleasure so far.
Thank you. Well, you're doing an excellent job in your first year here. The standard of service is very, very high, and you've continued that, to meet those expectations, I think, of our residents, and especially in the wintertime, I think, as you go around the metro, people always look at Edina with envy in terms of the snowplowing. And so it's something to be proud of, but there are so many things to be proud of in terms of public works here, so.
And I'm pretty sure we can keep the snowplows off the trucks for now.
Yeah.
And can you tell us a little bit the public works site? I drove by it the other day. Our old site is coming down.
Yes, that is true. Director Whoel has been handling that project, but we found out that just Friday that we're going to be actually knocking the building down this, this coming Friday.
Okay.
So you're start, you're going to start to see a lot more progress there.
Great, thank you.
Good. Other questions for Mr. Olson or comments? All right. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got three public hearings this evening, and the first is involving a proposed new biking and walking path on the north end of Lake Edina Park, or the north end of Fred Richards Golf Course. And Director Catry has this matter from the Park and Rec Department. And she will handle the staff presentation, and then when she's completed her presentation, we'll get questions from council, and then we'll open it up for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. I have a short presentation for you this evening. I am bringing to you the proposed Lake Edina biking and walking path. Just a little bit of history, most recent history. On April 9, the park board held a review and comment on this proposed path, and the draft minutes of that park board meeting, as you know, is in your packet. On April 16, I mailed out a letter for the public hearing to 520 residences and businesses within 1,000 feet of the park, and we put a note- within 1,000 feet of the park, and we put a notice of public hearing in the May 2 Sun Current. The Lake Edina path would provide a primary bike route, per the city of Edina Comprehensive Bicycle Transportation Plan. It would also provide a transportation route to Centennial Lakes Park and to the Cornelia School and Playground for the residents in the Park Lawn neighborhood. And it was also a 2012 Dewtown Initiative. The Edina Family Resource Center and Dewtown hosted an event on Park Lawn Avenue, and the Dewtown organization also received a petition, two petitions actually, with over 60 signatures. And where we are to date, in July 2012, the city of Edina hired Inspec to do soil borings and to determine the best location and layout of the path, and then they also gave us a preliminary budget estimate. And if the project is approved by city council, the plan going forward is for us to work with the city of Edina Engineering Department to finalize the plans and to complete the design of the project, and then our public works department would actually do the construction of the path. We have $85,000 in the 2013 CIP for this plan, and our preliminary estimates for the projects are coming in at about $55,000. I have an overhead here of Lake Edina Park, and the path would run from Park Lawn on the north side of Fred Richards Park. What you see in the middle here is a, it was a proposed playground back in the 80s or 90s, and we laid the footprint of the foundation of the playground, and the project did not move forward. And the path would then run on the north side of the fence over to Kellogg Avenue. And I have a larger version of the plan to show you. Thank you, Jennifer. This is the plan from Park Lawn Avenue. This is the entrance to the park now. There are a few street parking spots, and the path would run, again, just north of the fence line of Fred Richards Golf Course over to Kellogg Avenue. And that's all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Katry? Members Bragg.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I wrong in remembering that this pathway was proposed at one time? And there were some concerns at that time about the tee box and balls, and then tee box was shifted at some point. Can you talk a little bit about that backstory?
Thank you, Members Bragg. I honestly have no knowledge of this path being proposed personally. I know that, as I showed in that earlier diagram, there was a playground that was proposed, and I know at the time, the neighbors were very concerned about golf balls possibly being hit into that playground, and that was a big part of the discussion that stopped that playground project at that time. A couple of changes were made to the golf course in the alignment of the hole and the addition of some trees, and my understanding is that that has significantly helped the number of golf balls being hit into that park area and into the neighborhood yards.
So there's no public safety issue, according to your view of the situation?
Uh, you know...
In terms of golf balls flying through?
I know that the situation has significantly improved, and I did contact our insurance company to do an evaluation of the area, and they gave us the go-ahead.
In terms of your timeline, there was another, we got another communication from the ETC. It was advisory communication. I just wanted to note that that was also part of the correspondence we received, because it was a different recommendation than the park board. The park board talked about looking for a shorter route through some private property. Is that a feasible alternative? Has that been looked at?
It very well might be a feasible alternative. It would require some easements. I have actually spoken with Director Whoel about pursuing this maybe sometime in the future. It very well might be an option that would provide a shorter route to school for the kids on Park Lawn.
So, but we'd have to get additional private right-of-way from the cul-de-sac owners to make that happen?
Yes, Members Bragg, that's correct.
And that'd be a permanent easement over their property that we'd have to get?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And in terms of the, were this to come forward and be passed, in terms of the construction timing, I know that the school starts their after-school programs and summer reads right after school gets out in June. When does our park board programming begin at the Cornelia School?
Um, the park...
Roughly?
Roughly mid-June.
Mid-June. Okay. And the farmer's market at the Centennial Lakes end of the arrangement is already open?
No, that starts in June as well.
Okay, so everything starts in June. And based on today's timeline, were this to be approved, when would this be in the ground, ready to be used?
Well, as you know, we haven't had the best spring.
Without, assuming no snow?
Yeah, assuming no snow. We are on the May watershed district agenda, so hopefully we'll receive approval from the watershed district, and at that point, we just need to finish our engineering documents, get our final approvals, and conceivably, we would be able to start construction the end of May or the beginning of June.
Okay, so could be in the ground possibly by mid-May, assuming we follow today's timelines?
I don't think we would have it constructed by mid-May. I think...
Or, I'm sorry, mid-June.
Mid-June, yes.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Mid-June is safe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members Swenson.
Do you have a larger image of the golf course that shows where the Three Rivers Park Bike Trail is? It's similar, I think it's this one. I don't know if you brought it with you.
Um, you know, I do have that one I could put up.
And while you're looking for it, Mayor, it seems to me that the funding for the south end of Three Rivers was a 2014 project now, designed in 2013, project to start fall of 2014?
They're gonna start the preliminary design work in 2014.
Okay, so not this fall?
Not this year.
Design work, okay, so build out...
We just heard that again this morning at Rotary, as a matter of fact, from...
So build out 20...
15, 16.
15, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's the first leg from Richfield to the high school.
Right. So can you point with a pen or your finger? So that part of the bike trail connects with this path going across the park, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and that part of the Nine Mile Creek Trail still is not determined. Director Whoel would be able to answer more specific questions, but the route along 77th Street has yet to be determined, but yes, that is correct. It is definitely going to be in the area.
But we just approved the build on, is it Gallagher?
Yep, the Gallagher portion has been built. Part of that agreement with the Gallagher, with Three Rivers Park District is we are to provide them either easements or rights from the Fred Richards Clubhouse to Zertzies Avenue, and we're having a real difficult time finding a route on the easterly edge of coming off of Park Lawn, so we have all different types of alignments, and so we're gonna re-circle back with Three Rivers and see if we can shorten that up to let us go just to Park Lawn at this time until we can determine the actual route into the Fred Richards or along the southerly border of Fred Richards Golf Course.
Okay. But at this point, you anticipate the street of Park Lawn to be part of it?
That's correct, yes, yep.
And just a follow-up to you, that's, when we say we're uncertain about the alignment, it's going to be the south side of Fred Richards Golf Course, it's a question of where it connects in with the built-out portion on Gallagher?
That's right. Coming off of Park Lawn, we're looking at some potential easements that we'd have to acquire from Pentagon Park, and so if you can visualize that driveway going into Fred Richards Golf Course...
Yeah.
We only have a 24-foot wide easement that just covers the drive itself, so we're struggling a little bit with taking parking away at this point and providing an easement. So we want a little bit more time from Three Rivers to, you know, analyze the alignments going into Fred Richards Golf Course.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. Manager Neal, if I may, at the same time, we have a number of initiatives going on in the city, and could you or Director Teague comment on the new ownership of Pentagon Park and the impact that that may or may not have on this park land going forward? I understand that there are preliminary discussions underway. As a council, we've participated in them to a degree, and I know that there's the intention of doing some more study. Could you comment on that, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Bennett and members of the council, the new ownership of Pentagon Park, Hillcrest Development, has some interest in the future of Fred Richards Golf Course, and they're interested in knowing from the city what we think the future of that golf course is, particularly if we think the future is not a golf course, if we think it's a park or some other kind of public use. We haven't had really any time to discuss that through any of our advisory boards or council yet, but I do think it's something that we do want to have some discussion with you on. At this time, we can't, and Canton won't make any commitments to the owners of Pentagon Park, what we think the future is, until we have that discussion that involves you or your commissions and particularly the public that lives in that neighborhood.
And that, the owner of Pentagon Park did bring forward at a work session, I believe it's three weeks ago exactly, a design that showed a roadway adjacent to the golf course, and the council's consensus at that work session was that it did not wish to see vehicle traffic adjacent to the golf course. However, there, I believe, was consensus, and I correct, that some increased use pedestrian and bicyclist is anticipated to serve the community.
It is. They have, Hillcrest has some plans, some long-term plans for Pentagon Park to do some redevelopment in that area, both looking at what they're doing in terms of preserving some of the existing buildings to create a cash flow that begins then to fund some, taking down some of the buildings that are there now and rebuilding long-term. And they do envision a greater pedestrian and bicycle connection between the park or golf course and their development, and they received the very clear message to them that a roadway, as they were proposing, was not something that was likely going to get council support.
And the development plan that involved both the property, the full Pentagon Park, was, I believe, approved in 2008. That has now expired. Am I correct? It was a friendship village-type housing development north of 77th, and office and parking tower south of 77th, and hotel.
There is a regulatory plan called the AUAR, stands for Alternative Urban...
Area-wide.
Area-wide plan, thank you. And that plan has a five-year lifespan. That plan has about reached the end of that five-year lifespan, at which time the council could have the option just of extending it. But we have, both council and staff have encouraged the owners of Pentagon Park to update that. They've agreed to update it, and so they are working on the update of that AUAR, and that then has a regulatory process that comes back and ultimately gets presented and approved by the city council.
And again, am I correct in summarizing the consensus expressed at the work session of this body that there's a favoring of housing adjacent to the Fred Richards rather than a more intense use?
I believe that's a fair characterization of the message that the council expressed to the developer. I think the developer is concerned that the current AUAR, the current plan, the friendship village plan that you referenced earlier, is, no longer has the kind of market support that it did when it was initially presented, and they are most likely going to look at some alternatives to that, and the council will then have the ability to judge whether those alternatives are acceptable or not.
Thank you.
Member Brindell? Any questions at this point in time? Your letter that was in our packet that you sent to the neighborhood, I think you said 520 businesses and residences within a 1,000-square-foot radius, did that go out to date? That it's dated April 16?
Yes, Mayor Hovland, it did.
Okay, and you had an attachment on the back that had a diagram of what was being proposed?
Yes, Mayor Hovland, it did.
And in your letter, looking at the second paragraph, it talks about the proposed pathway that would run between Park Lawn and Kellogg into the cul-de-sac at the south end of Kellogg, that there were, that Dewtown had followed up interest from neighborhood residents, hosted events down in the neighborhood. Were there multiple events down there? I know Member Bragg attended one of them, and do you know whether there was just a single event or multiple events down there where the neighborhood was invited, and how broad a neighborhood invitation was put out?
Mayor Hovland, there was just one event that I'm aware of, and I'm sorry, it was prior to me assuming my role as the director, and I'm not sure of the invitation that went out for that event.
Okay, all right. Has there been any open house in the neighborhood or a city hall with respect to this proposed trail?
No, Mayor Hovland.
For the neighbors to come and see and comment on it?
There has not been an open house.
Okay, so we had the Dewtown event, and then you had your letter correspondence to the radius, the 1,000-foot radius, and that's the extent of the notification that they've had?
And then the notice in the Sun Current, and...
Right, thank you.
And then the park board meeting. That was it.
Okay. And at the park board meeting, I saw a lot of dialogue amongst the park board members in the minutes, but was there public testimony taken to?
No, Mayor Hovland, there was not.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, but we also discussed this at the time that we did the road reconstruction open house.
We did.
And it's been a part of the CIP for 2012, so...
Right.
Just if you're trying to outline past documentation.
And the ETC.
And Mayor, it's also been on the bike plan since 2008, which has been part of the...
Yeah, I think you had that in the first part of your presentation, yeah. There were some questions asked by Member Bragg about public safety, and we did have a letter from a gentleman, Mr. Lowell, that lived down at 7505 Kellogg Avenue. He sent us all a photo, I think, of all the golf balls he's collected, he has in his house, and of course, he was worried about safety as well. So do you know whether this is a current condition, or did he get these golf balls accumulated five years ago, or do we do anything about that?
I believe that those golf balls were accumulated over a period of time. I think he might be here this evening.
All right. We'll expect he'll testify, and he'll tell us about that. Okay. Other questions for Director Katry at this time? Member Bennett?
Yes. Would it help your honor to look at the entire route network as that's shown? I think you can see, it depicts where this fits within the system, not just within its space. Director Katry, do you want to use my copy of the bike plan?
I actually have one here for you.
Great.
And, gotta get my bearings here. This green space is Lake Edina Park, so it gives you an idea of the connection points.
Okay.
And dashed lines represent the routes, which will consist of a variety of facilities, in some places bike lanes, in some places charoes, in some places share the road, and in some places off-road trail. Am I correct?
Yes, Member Bennett, that is correct. The dashed red line is a primary route, and a dashed blue line is a secondary route.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have anything further? Member Swenson?
There were a number of questions about park safety. I'm wondering if Chief Long has a minute that he could come up and talk about how we police our parks, because we have a lot of parks like Bretison that are all woods. We have parks like this that are part residential, part open. We have parks that have parking lots in them, and this one has kind of one.
Right. Our park safety program is still evolving. When I first started, we used to have a summer park ranger that would take bikes and cars through the parks, and over time, our CSOs have...
And over time, our CSOs have kind of absorbed that activity. So during the daytime hours, um, I literally just put out a memo yesterday, for Bredesen and, um, uh, Lake Cornelia Park, we will be using our Segway bikes and foot patrol to go all the way around those paths and, and throughout the park. Um, as this, uh, bike path continue to develop in Edina, we are funded with a bike program from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, and we will be, uh, patrolling on bicycles also. We can't stop the crime, but we are very visible around our parks. Uh, our officers try to spend times in the parking lots to write reports and do other things. Um, so I, I don't know if that answers your question?
Okay. And so if you're having trouble with a particular park, it's by complaint, and then you have some sort of plan in place if there's an issue going on in a particular park area as to how you handle it?
That is correct. We have, uh, basically what we call an attack team. Anytime we have an increase or spike in crime in one particular area, including parks, we will, uh, aggressively put officers in the area, plainclothes, and then also uniform.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, Director Cotry, could you come back up? I had one further clarification I thought might be beneficial, and, and Member Sprague touched on it. We, we've actually got two advisory opinions that, uh, are different, uh, from each other. The, the park board heard this matter, and from looking at the, uh, the minutes and, and reviewing the, uh, overarching memo, it seemed like the park board members were not in favor of the path at this time. Some of the concerns they had were, uh, more long-term in nature, that there may be a playground needed over there, and maybe planning should be done simultaneously. They did request review by the Transportation Commission, and then they were wondering about, uh, long-term planning, uh, with respect to the future of Fred Richards Golf Course and its uses, uh, Nine Mile Creek, several other, uh, concerns that they had. And they voted not to support it at this point in time. Didn't reject it, but said at this point in time, uh, it, it, they should, we should wait and incorporate this into a, a longer planning horizon, is a message I got from them. And then the, uh, Transportation Commission looked at it, uh, in their meeting on the 25th of, uh, April, and voted to support construction of the pathway this year. Uh, their reasons being that, uh, the path is shown on the comprehensive bike plan as a primary bike route. Uh, it's in the 2013-17 CIP for construction in 2013. It's got neighborhood support, uh, at least, uh, one side of the neighborhood, and it's consistent with living street principles. So, we've got, uh, Transportation, uh, Commission saying, yeah, go ahead and build it right now, and a park board that says, eh, maybe a good idea, but, uh, don't do it right now. Let's, let's study this thing a little bit further. So, is that a fair summary?
Yes, Mayor Hovland, I think that is a very, very good summary of both.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the council? All right. I'm gonna open this up for a public hearing now, and, uh, we'll take testimony. And, uh, I think Ms. Bennerott mentioned at the beginning of the, uh, meeting this evening that you'll have three minutes to come up and, uh, ask questions or make comments. And, uh, you'll get a green light when you start to speak, and then when you've got about 30 seconds left, a yellow light will come on, giving you advanced warning that you ought to wrap up your comments so you can stay right on schedule. Then you'll get a red light when the three minutes are up. So, when you come up, i- if you don't have something that you want to use on the overhead projector, I would suggest going to one of the side podiums and give us your name and address. So, feel free to come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Tom Randall. I live at 7229 Menardo Lane, Cornelia area, so a little bit away from the, um, proposed bike path, but I come here in support of the bike path, the walking path proposal. I think it's a great idea to finally connect two very quiet streets, each other, and provide some access to those areas. There's another bike path or a walking path in that area connects Espasia Lane to, um, West Shore. It's used all the time, and neighbors are able to co-mingle and meet other neighbors that maybe they wouldn't take the time to walk all the way around to do. As my measurement took it, and it was mentioned before, I think it's, um, a little less than a half a mile to the Cornelia sidewalk from the end of that bike path on, um, Kellogg. And I think that's a great way to get these kids to schools and to the parks. As you mentioned, it's Kids to Park Day. I think that'd be a great, great tie-in for that as well. Also, I'd like to mention for the Cornelia area residents, it's a, a really nice access to a couple of bu- bus routes. Bus Route 6 and 587, um, travel right through the Park Lawn area. It's a much quicker way to go. And fair disclosure, I, I work for Metro Transit, so I advocate getting people on the bus. Um, trying to think, I think that's about all I had. Thanks for your consideration.
All right. Mr. Randall, thank you very much.
My name is Arnie Bigby. I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I live in, uh, 7621 Edinburgh Way. And, um, as a senior citizen, I really enjoy walking and biking, and I explore my neighborhood. Um, you know, today I had to, uh, pick up some new, uh, eyeglasses, so I walked to South, Southdale. And it's, uh, great. I love all the Dewtown things, and I think these, these pathways and bikeways are not only great for this population we've got there, our neighbors in, in Park Lawn, it's also great for people in the other neighborhoods who are, like me, out exploring. You wanna see some new areas and new neighborhoods when, uh, when you're out and about, and it gets people together. All right? Just think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Bigby. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Tom Gasler. Uh, my family's lived in, basically in the area since 62, so I'm on the north end of the Parkland Guilford Drive, 4417.
Uh, Guilford?
Yep.
Thank you, Tom.
I guess the question I'd add is, um, you know, it, it seems to be proposed to, to be a place for the kids to go to school. I think it's kind of out of the way. I would guess that there probably won't be that many, but as part of the rest of the bike trail, it probably makes, you know, some sense. Would it make any sense to look at this more as just a, like a walkway that was a marked trail to start with, and then judge the, the amount of usage before you spend, you know, the $85,000 or whatever it turns out to be to, you know, pave it and, and that type of thing? That's all I had.
Good. Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Tom Trewilliger. Uh, I live at 7421 Kellogg Avenue. Um, I, I spoke with a number of you yesterday, and I do appreciate your time and left voicemails and appreciate your time and listening to those. Also sent emails to each of you. I, I think, I'll just speak for myself, but it, um, I feel like a lot of us on the west side of the park did not feel like we really had, were communicated too adequately. I understand that it was, it's in the 2008 comprehensive plan, and it was talked about in the road construction, but we were never really reached out to, uh, like the neighborhood on the east side of the park was. As I think each of you know, I am opposed to it, uh, for a, a number of reasons. But I guess at a minimum would ask that this be tabled, at least the vote, if, if you are planning on voting on this tonight, tabled for further discussion about things such as how the, uh, police are gonna, uh, patrol the park. It is a difficult park to, to police, and it's really gonna be reliant, I think, on the neighbors that back up to the park, which is, the majority of the park is, um, pretty much landlocked by residential homes. Um, you know, I live three houses north of the cul-de-sac. I do have concerns about parking there. Um, and, and, you know, it's been a safe park. We do not have after-hour problems that I'm really ever aware of. Uh, I do have concerns about if that would change or not. I'll probably be running short on time here, so I wasn't necessarily planning on speaking about this, but, um, I do disagree with the number of golf balls, uh, that are being hit into that. It may have decreased, uh, in the last, whenever they changed, but they really didn't change much on that golf course. There are plenty of golf balls that are still going into what would be the east end of that trail, and, and probably a good 200 feet from within that cul-de-sac. Um, I'm confident in saying that. And then, I, I'm just learning about these bike paths that are coming in from, my understanding, 2014, on the south side of Fred Richards. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a new bike lane that's going along 70th Street that was, you know, there was a lot of discussion about how that street is gonna be, um, proposed, and there is a bike trail. So, most of the commuters, commuters are gonna be coming from south of 70th or from, um, west of France, or really west of Oaklawn, Kellogg, our neighborhood. So I question whether it's needed for those few people, those few commuters. And that's really not, to me, a destination place. I don't think there's a lot of people going there. And I guess the biggest concern that I have is that, you know, unlike the trail that connects the Spasia Lane to West Shore, that's single-family residential, excuse me, with single-family residential. This was originally designed as a buffer, this park. I, I think I'm safe and sane from the city. Uh, it has served our neighborhood very well as a buffer.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
And this would be connecting a single-family with multifamily.
I need to have you wrap up. I let you go over a little bit, but...
So, I, I would ask that you would just table that your vote.
Thank you. And I personally want to thank you for your voicemail. It was very civil and, and polite. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Uh, Jim Peterson, Mayor and Council. I'm at 7401 Kellogg. I'm also adjacent to the space. And I set out, uh, last evening to attempt to get some signatures and a petition to not approve the path from Park Lawn to Kellogg. Got some word that it looked like it might be voted on and might be passed. Um, so I wanted to get out and get as many, um, signatures as I could, and I got 35 signatures from 34 different residents. I would also comment that, um, if you want to take your dog on a nice walk and pick up some new golf balls, that you can do that. Usually, pick up at least one in that space at the end of the cul-de-sac and, and head east, um, towards Park Lawn along that fence. You can still find, uh, good golf balls. I will also add the concern that I walked to the tee box, um, from the back tee, that hole is 320. Um, from the front tee, it's 300. Um, I voiced that concern to one of my neighbors. I'll go on record to say that I can't hit a ball 300 yards, but I know people can. And he had stated he had put it within that ring. Um, the ring proposed for a future playground, um, is actually closer to the tee box than the hole itself. Um, as I, as I went around and asked for opinions on this and, and to get signatures, um, one of the concerns that I raised, and certainly if I had kids growing up at a point that they were biking now, young kids, um, if they get to the end of that Kellogg, uh, down to the cul-de-sac, and are enticed to go on the path, they're basically a half block away from getting onto Park Lawn and getting out to France, and that would be a concern. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Thanks, Mr. Peterson. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi. Uh, my name is Margaret Vecchio Smith. I live at 7316 Wooddale, so just a couple blocks away from the proposed path. I wasn't really planning to speak tonight, but, um, I do feel like I do want to voice a couple comments, um, just to provide another voice, um, for some of the recent comments. Um, first, I think that, okay, I am an educator. I worked in the Edina schools for a while. I'm a parent. I think it is ridiculous that there is no connection point for all of our students who live in the Park Lawn and Gallagher Apartments, you know, friends of my kids. We live three blocks from one of my son's best friends, and to get to his house, we have to go all the way out and around, and it's because he lives in an apartment. And I know that there should be buffers against commercial space, but I am very nervous about the comment of a buffer against multifamily housing. That, to me, speaks to one of the issues that we, as a community, have a history of, which is our very segregated housing, where we have, almost all of our apartments are in very specific areas. And you can go back to comments hun- over 100 years ago from Jane Adams, the best way to get a functional community is to have people of diverse socioeconomic statuses living on the same block. So, I am not opposed to tabling this for further discussion. I think the golf balls is an important safety point. My kids are gonna be biking on it. They're gonna wear helmets, but I don't want them to get whacked in the shin with a golf ball. But I really want to make sure that the considerations that you are taking are safety considerations and not considerations that, if you go back to the core, are socioeconomic considerations. That's a whole different conversation, and it makes me very nervous, I will just say. Um, and I also think that, um, in terms of the safety of kids getting out to streets, they can just go down 72nd Street and be at France just as easily as they could go, you know, down this bike trail and be at France. And if my kids are old enough to bike by themselves, they're gonna be old enough to bike by themselves and not get to France. So I personally am not concerned about the safety of my children being on that path, aside from the golf balls, which, if the insurance company says it's okay, they're pretty conservative. So that's for you guys who have more information to decide. Um, I'll leave my comments at that. But please, just think about the socioeconomic issues bluntly, shall I say.
All right. Thanks, Margaret.
It's easier if you go to the side.
Or did you, did you want to show us something on the overhead? Otherwise, this is best.
That's best.
Okay.
I want you to be heard.
Yeah.
They can hear you.
My name's Mary Ames. Uh, I am a parish, a parishioner of Saint Richard Catholic Church, and I am here to thank you people. And I wanted my, I'm here for my people. And we have now, in Saint Richard's Church, 7650 Penn Avenue South, and it is now a, a beautiful, not against our church, but we've made, uh, the, enough room for concerts, and that they have 800 seats, and we are getting it done very well. We're already getting people concerts and, and, uh, other things like that. And that's the reason I'm here. They wanted us for my main, because of the south, uh, metro area are Edina, Bloomington, and, uh, Richard. That's true, isn't it? The three, in that. South metro.
Yes.
And so it's big there, and we wouldn't, wanted the people to know, to, excuse me, to know, uh, that we're getting this for you, and, uh, don't have anything bad that is safe to you. So I can go back to my people and say, yes, I did see, um, my mayor here, and now I'm going to go to Bloomington, and then I'm going to go to, uh, I got you done, Richfield.
All right. Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming over this evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bustinich. I live at 4604 Guilford Drive. And I'd just like to, um, pick up a little bit on what these gentlemen said regarding the notice. Many of the neighbors that I spoke with didn't have any idea about the path that was going in. And I know that the letter said that there was a Dew Town event hosted in the neighborhood where 60-plus signatures were collected in favor of the path. We didn't have any notice of that event. I have no idea where it was. This letter is the first I heard of it. I know that, you know, 35 signatures were collected since last night, and I know that several neighbors have sent emails in, um, as we've become more of aware, more aware of it over the ne- past few days. I'm not in favor of the path. I don't think a lot of neighbors that I've talked to are not in favor of the path. Also, the golf ball issue, uh, we don't know for sure that that's been corrected. There are some residents down there who think it clearly hasn't been corrected. And then you said the Transportation Board, uh, also said that this path has support from at least one neighborhood, and I'm assuming that's the neighborhood where the Dew Town event was hosted. But again, um, our neighborhood, as far as I know, didn't have any notice of that and weren't given the option to sign on a petition or not, so, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Good evening, uh, council members. Miss, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your past support of bicycle initiatives. Uh, my name is Lori Richmond. I live on Ewing, 58th and Ewing, in Edina. I bike to work, uh, pretty often, about 2,000 miles, and that goes, uh, to South Bloomington. So, those are areas that I bike through a lot. Uh, and I would, I would echo what the resident... resident said about the connection for the children that live in that area. For them to be able to get to school in a safe way, to not go out to France Avenue on the sidewalks, I think is a pretty important aspect to a livable community. So I encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you said Fifty-eighth and Ewing, Ms. Richmond?
Yes.
Could you come back up and give us your precise address, please?
Five-eight-two-eight Ewing Avenue, South.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi there. My name's Katie Meyer. I am one of the former community organizers on the Do Town campaign. I live in St. Paul, so twelve ninety-one Thomas in St. Paul. I just wanted to come and kind of explain kind of the role that we played. I know a lot of you have been mentioning Do Town and might not understand kind of what we've done and what we did around this issue. So I want to provide some clarity around that. This conversation started pre-Do Town with the city and people that lived in the community when the statewide health improvement program did a study about a year ago. And in that study, they held focus groups with residents in the city. And at that point, it was mentioned that a playground and a path would be suggested for this part of town. Also, the Edina Resource Center hosted a meet-on-the-sidewalk event in that neighborhood where further conversations were stemmed about this issue. The part where we hosted an event and had a petition, for us, that was not a city-sponsored event. That was a Do Town event. And what we did specifically was reach out to property managers in the area. So in the Park Lawn neighborhood, there's a lot of multi-unit apartments. And so we targeted those residents where the most, it's the most diverse part of Edina, the most dense and the most low-income. And so we targeted them because usually their voices are the ones that aren't heard. And so we also went door-to-door in some other condos in the area. And so it wasn't an event that was kind of publicized through the city. And it wasn't kind of necessarily meant to be. We just wanted to make sure that there was conversations being had around this topic. But what came from that is I talked to a lot of family members, a lot of moms from a variety of backgrounds that really felt like this was a safe route for their kids to get to school. And if you look on the map, it's a perfect kind of thoroughfare to get them to school safely without backtracking. And a lot of people that didn't even have kids mentioned that it was really important because the kids would cut through houses anyway. There wasn't a set path for them to go. So they were going through the neighborhoods where this kind of provided the way to go safely to school without causing kind of that friction between kids and the neighbors. So that's just a little bit of my perspective and background on this. And if I can answer any questions about Do Town rule, sorry, I'm sweating here. But, and I came in a little late, so I apologize if I missed some of the residents' earlier conversation because I would have liked to address any issues around that. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Anyone else?
My name is John Velgersdike, forty-five sixteen Sedum Lane. So we're a block off of, about half a block off where the path would come through. Became aware of the issue through your mailing, but, and again, I'm sorry, I had attended an earlier meeting this evening, but wanted to be here. My concern in part is that this has not been communicated well to the neighborhood. With our current street project going on, there's been numerous mailings to the residents. And the mailing that most recently came out here in April, I'm afraid, was lost in the middle of a lot of that communication to our neighborhood. And I'd ask you to postpone this action this evening with regard to that. With regard to the movement itself, I'm a resident for, I grew up here and moved back into the community about twenty-two years ago. I was here at the time that Fred Richards was developed. And at that time, one of the justifications for closing the Edina Lake Park at that time was that it was a police incident area. It was a problem. It was isolated unto itself. And there were a number of incidents. And so as part of the expansion and the agreement with, I believe it was roundhorsed at the time for the expansion of Fred Richards, they were going to close the park, which was at that time part of the community. And with that, with good cause, because the police were reporting there many times. My concern is that giving access to that open area back there will only invite further incidents in the future. It's unguarded. It's not well-lit, you know, currently. I don't know its future plans, but it's a problem in that regard. It does not strike me as a direct route to the school. And I question how many school-age children for the elementary school are being trusted to actually walk to school from the high-density area in the Park Lawn neighborhood. But that's not for my evaluation. That's for yours. But there is a concern for us. We chose to live in a very quiet neighborhood, and we don't invite a lot of foot-and-bike traffic into that. I don't know that that's our choice entirely, but it's certainly our preference. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Art Lowell. I live at seventy-five oh five Kellogg. I'm the fellow that wrote the long letter, okay? And one of my, yes, yes, the concern, safety is my main concern. I can't compromise that. There are, since the golf course opened, it was about four or five days ago, I've picked up thirteen balls, okay? Two in my yard and the others in that area as such. Now, yes, the picture you see there is from day one on the, when the golf course was opened, from that time. Initially, in the first couple of years, it was thirteen, fourteen, I lost three windows, hit twice in my own yard with golf balls as such. I talked with the golf people as such. We worked on it, okay? We did things that caused it, that caused the golf balls to go in half, okay? That the tee-off area has not changed, okay? And people keep talking that way, but it has not changed. And I followed it from day one. So the, my concern is safety. You could do a couple of things. One is I'm suggesting that canopy over the top. You really got the golf balls in the first hundred and thirty feet, from the street to the telephone pole. You really have very little beyond that, I think. I sit right there and see the whole thing as such. So, but I still see three to four golf balls a day, and I pick up as such. Since it's opened, I think I mentioned, I had thirteen golf balls as such. So it's a safety issue. I'm not one-hundred percent against the path. I think it's, incidentally, this business of part of the trail going into a residential area, where do you go west on this trail as such? It's a residential area. The kids to go there and walk on two major streets. Kellogg is a major street. It's a feeder, collector's street. So are the others. Why would you want to send your kids there? They never did. I owned the apartments on Park Lawn Avenue for forty years. The kids go through the park, through my property, then go through north as such and through the houses there. I never made a stink out of it because it wasn't that many. There was a few people and no big deal. I thought, those kids are going to actually come down and go the path and take the other route? Not my kids. So I guess I'm.
Thanks, Mr. Lowell. That's helpful. Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
You had a motion of second to close the public hearing, discussion. Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose a nay. Carry. Discussion, or to just prompt some questions for council members of staff?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
This is a question for either Director Hoel or Director Katre. In the time that I've been on council since two thousand and seven, we've had different types of facilities come forward. I know that when we hold a street, when we are planning a street reconstruction, we hold a public hearing because by law we're required to do so because there's going to be a component of that paid for by the residents. On residential streets, the complete cost of the surface reconstruction, and state aid streets differently. On park pathways, however, I don't think, when it's been located on park land, that I recall a public hearing. I know that we've reconstructed or resurfaced park paths in Garden Park. I know that we've resurfaced park paths in Todd Park. We've resurfaced park paths, I believe, in Braddison Park. And does someone have a different recollection or correction of that?
Garden, Garden Park is the newest one that I think we voted on in the most recently because we redid Todd and we redid Braddison. But I, I'm sorry, my recollection is that there was no public hearing for Garden Park. Is that, would that be correct as to state statute?
There's no statutory requirement to have a public hearing for the kind of trail that we're proposing to do tonight.
And I don't, and again, whether there's a requirement, I know that this council has tried to be very inclusive. And in fact, I do recall during the comprehensive plan process that in the summer of two thousand and seven, we held quadrant meetings, one in each quadrant of the city. And that was an initial stage of the planning, although the public process started with a very well-advertised, big public meeting in December two thousand and six. And then the Planning Commission Working Group was working on it, bringing things to council. When there were some elements of the plan in place, but not all, there was, again, these four quadrant meetings that were pretty well-attended, I recall. I attended every one of them. And I remember about sixty to over a hundred people at each of them. The one for the southeast quadrant was held at the centrum. I also recall when the plan was more finalized, moving in pieces of it complete, there were five neighborhood meetings held, organized by topic rather than by quadrant, as the previous had been. And that at least one of those five was devoted to transportation, which would have included some of these elements. So I know that there has been opportunity for people who were participating, who were watching that process and wanting to be part of that process, to be part of that process. And that was when this link, Director Katre, can you bring up that map again, of the, of the primary and secondary bike routes? So as I look on that, and again, we're looking at the red line that's east of Highway and Hundred, north of the lowest red line, it's kind of, well, not kind of, it's an essential piece. If that piece is not built, and I think that's why, Mayor, we had the recommendation from the Transportation Commission that we had. Yes, this is a bike facility map, but in addition, it's also an essential piece for pedestrians. There just is no link if this is not built. And this is, again, not for vehicles. This is only for bicycles and pedestrians. If this link is not built, then I see that north-south coming down on Westshore Drive. And I see it functioning well for people in the neighborhood who maybe want to go up to the swimming pool or the art center. I see, but I don't see something that helps people from the neighborhood, west of Lake Edina Park, get over to the Transit on France Avenue, get over to Movie Night at Centennial Lakes Park, get over to the farmer's market by foot or by bike if they choose to. That link is not there. Conversely, if that link is not there, I don't see folks from the east side of it being able to access the school without cutting through yards. And I understand that we can seek to have an easement, but that has its own costs and its own downsides. And that wouldn't be, I'm sure, for bicycles anyway. And it also keeps people from having access to streets where they can walk of an evening, or sidewalks, or an afternoon, as Mr. Bigby testified. So thank you. That, for me, is an illustration of the importance of this because if it's not there, it really is an essential missing piece. The network, the network that we're trying to build, is missing a piece that can't be provided somewhere else. And I think that was the difference between the Park Board and the Transportation Commission, is the Park Board was focused on park planning, which still will take place. But the park planning doesn't depend, this essential piece, the, has a fairly logical location. And I don't think anything about the park planning is going to change that location. And to clarify, it's a location for this piece of our network. It's not a piece of the regional network. Nobody on this dais is talking about it being part of the regional network. That regional network, which had its own process also, goes to the south. And if there is more planning or the future of Fred Richards, that I'm sure can include some discussion on that. But no one is contemplating a shift of what has been shown for that location at this time. And I think that's it for my comments. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. Member Sprig?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, this is a strategic link. It's a small link, but it's going to have a lot of impact. And it goes both ways. I don't think there's unanimity on, for or against in either neighborhood. There's correspondence on the dais from neighbors on Fundell and some other streets back there that are looking forward to a connection to Centennial Lakes, which is a logical connection. It's an activity area for families. We heard even our Planning Commissioner tell us in a meeting last week, he wishes there was a safe way out of the Cornelia neighborhood to get to Centennial Lakes. That was in our work session, just as an anecdote. So, and then we know on the, on the Park Lawn side, because of the Do Town surveys, and also because of the needs assessment done by SHIP, which is a pretty comprehensive needs assessment of the Park Lawn neighborhood, there are, there's a need for this transit link. There's also a need for recreation. Park Lawn is the most dense and diverse neighborhood in Edina. Ms. Meyer told us that. With a neighborhood park that has no amenities. And that's, that's not, it's not a right situation for the families and the children that live there. So this will partially correct some of that. I know we're not doing the park structure at this point, but we are going to make a safe route to school for them. And I will, is that path going to be lighted?
The, the plan is to not light the path.
Okay, so it's a daytime connection. Someone else wrote in their correspondence, and someone testified about having a connection to their friends. I know there are relationships on either side. And to me, this project is about, it's not about maintaining a buffer. It's about eliminating a barrier that exists right now. It's a transportation barrier, and it's a barrier between friends like that that want to get together, and between the population of the school and, and the school itself. I, I don't see a need to table this. We have, construction as it is, is going to be mid-June. We have a lot of programming starting in June. This has been in our CIP since last year. And we need to get this, this link online so that it can, we can get some use out of our fifty-five thousand dollars that we're going to invest in this strategic link if this goes forward. So I would like to see it move forward now. And I was, I was glad to see, I don't know how you value-engineered this to get the cost down from eighty-five to fifty-five, but that's a pretty significant reduction. So whatever happened in between, I appreciate your dedication to making this come, come in way, way below our CIP numbers because we have
I'm going next.
Much more transit and bike infrastructure to build. We are building a network in the Cornelia neighborhood. There's going to be a lot of changes coming. This summer, we have the pedestrian crossings at Seventy-sixth, which will actually be in the neighborhood of this link, Sixty-sixth and Seventieth, that will be being constructed. We have two major constructions on Sixty-ninth and at Byerly's that are going to lead to some intersection changes and some changes on Sixty-ninth and Hazelton. There is the Gateway District redevelopment, which is, which is also may potentially lead to some changes on the south side of the park. And then there's the Park Master Plan itself that the Park Board's working on. What is, is there an alternative use for Fred Richards that we might want to look at, given the athletic field needs and the multipurpose space needs that we keep running up against and all, all the different things we do in the city? Plus, the Safe for Els's School Plan, which is being finalized, and Three Rivers Park Trail, which we now heard is coming in two thousand and fifteen. So there's a lot happening in the neighborhood. To me, it's, it's a good thing. We're going to attract new people that are looking for these connector points. And I want to circulate outside of the vehicle and have, have a safe way to recreate with their family. And this is the first step. So I would, I would move this path.
All right. Now, we're going to have some further discussion. Member Brindle?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's calls and letters. That's how we stay informed about how people think, what you're thinking, and the answers that you need in order to have the clarification and understanding or what, as much as, as we can provide you. I attended recently a, a day-long seminar. The mayor was at the same, was at the same event. And Puck Mickelby And Puck Mickelby, you could Google him, he's a very interesting person. He's a retired Colonel from the Marine Corps. And he has an organization that I believe is his called the New America Foundation. And he's looking at national security and where national security lies, where the responsibility lies, and what we can do, if anything, from, from an individual point of view to enhance our own national security. And one of the, one of the main points he had was walkable communities. To have a walkable, vibrant community is one that's out and active. And I was, I was amazed by how much common sense that, that made. And not having thought through that myself before, it makes me look at proposals like this from the standpoint, not just getting people from point A to point B, but the feeling of safety and community that is, that surrounds you when a connector like this is being used. And you see the same people, day after day, week after week, using that. And it is a connector. Looking at the connection that it will provide for people on Kellogg, on Sedum, on Hibiscus, to get over to Park Lawn, then you've got your choice of walking along the sidewalk along Park Lawn or walking along the sidewalk along Park Lawn and 76th to get to Centennial Lakes, to get to the farmer's market. Things that we want you to feel like are walkable. And, and in the coming, in the coming months, you'll find that intersection of 76th and France be enhanced to make it easier to cross as a pedestrian, to widen that, that zone in the center of France. So there's a better, better place to stop if, in fact, you can't make it all the way across in one light. So making that safer itself and then a device like this to make it safer to get there. So it's one little piece, it's one little piece in a big network. And, and I understand that, that there are, there are concerns about what it's going to mean. Because you live right there, I would hope that in the coming months and years, it will be comfort to you, to know the people who are on that path and, and to know that that path is, is a part of, part of your security and community.
Thank you. For me, I came to this meeting tonight kind of torn about what to do here. That's contrary to the way I felt when I walked your neighborhood prior to street reconstruction. And we were talking about whether there ought to be sidewalks, one place or another down there. We ended up with no sidewalks. But with Brian Hedberg, one of your neighbors down there, we walked all the way down to the cul-de-sac on Kellogg. And when I looked across towards Park Lawn, I thought, this is a natural, this, this should occur. I was bothered when I got Mr. Lowell's letter talking about the safety, public safety aspects relative to the golfers, the golf activity that goes on there and the risks someone might take of getting hurt there. Two other issues that affected my thinking were, I like to make sure that there's a lot of opportunity for public input. And I was concerned about adequate notice here, although I think Member Bennett has pointed out that when we've done this before on park property, it's a decision that the council has made typically in the absence of a public hearing. So I think there was some good public discussion on it tonight. The timing issue of it also bothered me, because I know from the data that we're getting that our golf course operations at Braemar and Fred Richards, rounds are down about 30% since 19, late 90s. And I could, I could potentially see a time when the Park Board could come through with a recommendation saying, we've got to consolidate our golf course operations at Braemar and find some other public use for Fred Richards. Parks, trails, bikeways, a multitude of uses, maybe some fields. I, you know, you could potentially see that coming. So I was struck by the discourse that went on at the Park Board about whether this was the right time to be doing something like this. And that tended to resonate with me a little bit in terms of waiting for long-term planning. But I think, having said all of that, listening to council members, listening to the public, thinking about what this network means from a transportation standpoint, I think this is going to be a great thing for the neighborhood. And I intend to support it, even though I came here with some real mixed feelings about it. So I think, I think it'll be, it'll be very, very good for our community and very, very good for your neighborhood. So we got a motion to second. And do we need a roll call on this? I don't think we do. Favorable majority of the council. All right, we got a motion to second. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next matter we have in front of us is conditional use permit and variance, allow first-floor elevation to more than one foot above existing floor elevation. This is the proposal of the Adalins with regard to a piece of property in the Sunny Slope neighborhood. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located just east here of City Hall, north of 50th on Sunny Slope. It's the second lot in, north of 50th Street. Couple of aerial shots of the property. This is it here. You might note that this property is unique in that it has access to two streets, Hilltop as the cul-de-sacs here at the end, and off of Sunny Slope. This is a look from Sunny Slope at the existing home today. The applicant is proposing to tear down this home and rebuild a new home. This is a rendering of what the home would look like. The new home would, is proposed to gain its access off of Hilltop Lane. So this is the proposed home here at the end of the cul-de-sac. You see as it relates to the adjacent homes. And this is a look from Sunny Slope at the rear of the home. So the request before the city council is a conditional use permit with a variance to the conditional use permit standards regarding the first floor of a new home that may not exceed the first floor elevation of the existing home by more than one foot. The first, the first floor of the proposed home would be at 11 and 1/2 feet above the existing first floor, the first floor of the existing home. And that's due to the slope change from the top of Hilltop down to Sunny Slope. This is a rendering of, or a site plan that would show the new home. And again, there's quite an elevation drop from the top of Hilltop Lane down to Hilltop. So the, the intent of that ordinance, the one-foot rule, is really, when that was created a couple of years ago, was to regulate a home that's being replaced in the same footprint, facing the same street. We didn't take this kind of circumstances into consideration, a site with, with two frontages. So the primary issue before the council is the proposed new home reasonable for the site and are the variance criteria satisfied? Both staff and the Planning Commission believe that it is reasonable and that the hardship or the variance criteria have been satisfied. The practical difficulty in this instance that make it unique to the property, again, is the steep slopes of the site as they move down toward Sunny Slope, and then the uniqueness of this through lot that has access on two streets. We believe that it's reasonable to allow a new home to gain its frontage off the, off of Hilltop as opposed to Sunny Slope. Just to quickly show that the proposed home would actually, would fit into the existing neighborhood. The lots in this area are quite large in size, roughly about a half acre, larger than our typical lots. Just quickly move through some of the existing homes in the neighborhood. This is the home directly to the south. You can note in a lot of these pictures, there's mature trees that separate all the homes along the block. This is the home directly to the north on Sunny Slope. This is up on Hilltop Lane. This would be that, that Rambler-style home that's, was just to the, right next door to the proposed home. New home that was also built on the cul-de-sac. These last two pictures, these homes do sit quite a bit higher than the proposed home. Moving, again, off of Hilltop Lane, Dale Drive. This is the home across the street on Sunny Slope Road at the corner of 50th and Sunny Slope. So this would be across the street. This would be another home directly across the street. So again, you can see the, the large lot size, where you can't even see the homes adjacent to it as we move through the pictures. When the Planning Commission reviewed this, they did make a couple of additional conditions. They suggested that no driveway be created off of Sunny Slope Road, that this is truly their, their rear yard. And then the second condition was that they develop a landscape plan and provide some elevations for the city council to consider. And the applicant has done a fantastic job in working with the neighbor to, across the street and also developing those plans. And we'll quickly take a look at it. This is the landscape plan here. They're proposing some pretty significant tall trees, combination of deciduous and evergreen type trees. This is the elevation of what that landscaping would look like. You can see the, the good height of the trees. And it's my understanding that the applicants have met with the neighbors across the street, and this plan, as submitted here, is satisfactory to them. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission, we are recommending approval, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the resolution that's before you. With that, I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague? All right. Thank you. The proponents are here, and is the architect here as well? I'm going to have the architect come forward first, and then you can decide. We'll take about, just take 10 minutes to make your presentation if that's, that should work well, I think.
Actually, I might use this middle one to show.
Sure. We'll get you a handheld microphone.
Mayor and members of the council, I'll keep this very simple. I think Kerry did a very good job of--
Before you get to going too far, why don't you, fast, why don't you give us your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Peter Escookie. And I'm at 1-8318--
Would you pronounce your last name again, Peter?
Escookie.
Thank you.
E-S-K-U-C.
C-H is hard at the end. Escookie?
Yeah.
That what you said? Okay. Thank you.
Like to listen in Spanish. And 1-8318 Minnetonka Boulevard in Deep Haven.
Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
And I just want to be very brief. I think this is a fairly simple matter of where a variance, I should say, where a zoning code doesn't really apply as equally to this lot. If you look at the subdivision, you have a cul-de-sac, their lot is at the end of a cul-de-sac. Then you have Sunny Slope, which is more of a feeder street. Had I been the original architect, I would have designed it at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I think everyone would agree, that's a little bit more of a private setting. And due to the steepness of the grade that drops from the cul-de-sac down to Sunny Slope, it allows for kind of a natural, private backyard if you were to front Hilltop. And I think, you know, for the most part, if you would have put the building on Hilltop, it would have been about 11 and 1/2 feet taller, higher up originally. So I think, you know, part of that is that I don't believe that the zoning really applies well to a lot like this, where it probably should have been fronted the other street. The results of putting the house on Sunny Slope, and I believe the current owner is here tonight, who can attest to some of the challenges that they've faced trying to remodel the house. As you can see from Sunny Slope, you're looking at a large amount of driveway. It's a tuck-under garage situation. We try pretty hard to make design of houses for aging in place, where the garage is level with the main level. And you have as, as few rises as possible. The positioning of this house is such that it's set way back into the hill. So the view from all those rooms is pretty much the hillside. And my client hired us to optimize the views, the land, the layout. And as such, we came up with a proposal that fronts, the front of the house fronts Hilltop, with then a private backyard facing Sunny Slope. So it seems only natural to do it that way. And as a result of the zoning ordinance, I don't know if the one-foot elevation ordinance applies very well here. It creates a practical difficulty. I'll show the current landscape plan. Sorry for thumbing around so much. If you look at, this is that landscape plan. You can see that--
Back out a little bit. There you go.
You can see that this is Sunny Slope here, that it creates a real private setting, not just for the homeowner, but as you're driving down, as any other resident, you get more of a park-like setting. So I, we believe that it's, it's a fitting proposal to the neighborhood and that it meets the test of a variance, which is a situation where normal zoning code creates And that's all I have.
All right. Questions for Mr. Escookie?
Do you have your drainage plans with you?
Excuse me?
Do you have your drainage plans with you for the property?
Yeah, we have a modified, we have two landscape plans. We done, we did one with the original application. This is a general survey.
Okay.
We have one that shows more color-coded, you know, where the grassy areas are, where the patios are, where the gardens are. It shows where all of the contours are. It shows where swales are. And then we had modified, since the Planning Commission meeting, we had modified the rear yard as such.
Can you walk me through that part of it?
Sure.
That you just were on.
This rear yard?
Yep.
All right. So the Sunny Slope here currently has a driveway that feeds off of here, coming to the house. So almost the entire yard is crisscrossed by driveway. By fronting Hilltop, the house basically has a very short driveway and a large backyard. So you create more of a park-like setting. This is where the upper portion, I'd have to kind of thumb back and forth, but this is more of an upper deck, or patio, kind of a flat area at the level of the lower level. Then you come downstairs. This is the lower lawn. It's a little bit lower yet. And then these planting buffers--
Mm-hmm.
--provide a visual buffer. And you can see the planting species. I'm not the landscape architect that produced, and this was produced by yardscapes, but there are several large black hill spruces, ornamental grasses. They've actually shown some, some of the perennials, things like that.
So you'll have plenty of infiltration, because you're only at 90% lot coverage?
Correct. This is well in conforming of all side setbacks, building heights, et cetera. The rest of the zoning code is conforming.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Escookie? All right. Would either of the Adalins care to come forward and tell us a little bit about the project? I know that Amy Adalin testified in front of the Planning Commission. Welcome.
First and foremost, we're Kirk and Amy Adalin. We currently live at 7630 South Bay Drive in Bloomington. In way of background, I actually grew up in the Sunny Slope neighborhood. My wife, Amy, grew up on Vanderwork. We still have a running debate on who grew up on the wrong side of the tracks, but east and west. We have moved back to the Twin Cities about nine years ago. I've lived in Bloomington since that time, but have strong ties to the city of Edina. My parents actually recently moved out of the Sunny Slope neighborhood, and so we have spent a lot of time in that neighborhood with my cousins and-- have spent a lot of time in that neighborhood with my cousins and such. And having grown up there, our goal was really to try to create a similar environment for our children to grow up in. We think Sunny Slope, you know, offers that opportunity for us. We really tried to be proactive with the neighborhood as much as we could in terms of involving direct neighbors, meeting with them directly. I think you've seen in our application, there's a number of signatures from them, but also trying to create a new home that would fit into the neighborhood and enhance the character of the Sunny Slope neighborhood. Having grown up there, I respect that and want to try to pursue that kind of a mission.
Cool. I second what he said.
All right. Okay. Questions for the Adalns? All right. Well, thanks for thinking about coming back to Edina. Anybody have any other questions? Otherwise, I'll open this up for a public hearing. All right, I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried.
How long is this matter?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second with regard to the resolution 2013-42, which is approving a conditional use permit in variance at 4924 East Sunny Slope for Kirk and Amy Adalyn. The address will be changing to a Hilltop Lane address if this is approved. Further discussion?
I just wanted to say--
For comment?
I thought Commissioner Schroeder had a very telling comment. He said the original development cut into a natural land form and thought this kind of reestablished the natural beauty of the land. And that's what I like about this plan. So I appreciate the thought that went into it, and also coming back with a more flushed-out landscaping plan for us to review.
Member Bennett?
I'd also like to thank--
Comment.
--the planning commission for a really thoughtful discussion, because I think it's partly why we've had such a short discussion this evening.
Yeah. That's true.
And Member Brendel.
I just have one comment. There's a young man in the back row who hasn't said anything yet. Mr. Gustafson, just a point of introduction, Ralph Brendel is my husband, and Kevin Gustafson, your uncle. Grew up with Ralph and have known each other for years. And are you Hans?
I'm Sven.
You're Sven. Thank you. Sven is son of Jeff Gustafson, longtime builder of many homes in Edina. And so, following in well-traveled footsteps. So glad to see you on this project.
Thank you very much.
And for the Adalns, I tell you that this is a beautifully done project. I know that you want to be back close to your roots, and this is a great way to do it. Beautiful landscaping plan that came in between the planning commission and the city council meeting. Mr. Escookie, you haven't been in Edina before, at least not in front of us, I don't think, but you've done some beautiful work here. So we better get a vote on this matter. All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Good luck with everything.
Now you can buy your Hornets sweatshirts. It's official.
I forgot my letter jacket.
All right. I love it.
Having it and wearing it are two different things. Being able to wear it, yeah. All right. We've got one other public hearing matter this evening, and that is a proposal to re-divide some property that had been consolidated, and now they want to re-divide it with the way it used to be over on France and 49 and 1/2 Street. So, Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this property is located up in the 50th and France neighborhood, specifically 49th and 1/2 and France Avenue. It is the Spilon Montage site that I think most of you are familiar with. This is a look at the existing salon entrance. And also, the second site is the, it's the original Trinity Chapel that was built back in the 1870s, and it used to be located on the northwest corner of 50th and France. And when that commercial block was developed, the church was moved to this location, and it turned into a residential home, has since been remodeled into commercial over the years. And it was purchased by Spilon Montage a number of years ago, and they consolidated those two lots together. They'd like to separate them. In consolidating the two lots, it's just a simple form that's filled out in our assessing department. They don't have any specific plans for the site, but they just like the option to potentially sell the property. They're not exactly sure what to do at this point. Another look at the existing house. So this is how the site exists today. This is the original plat, and you can see the existing small parcel located right here. So the applicant is just simply proposing to reestablish that original subdivision. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the proposed subdivision. I can stand for questions.
Member Swenson.
When we annexed this and they moved into it, it seemed to me that we had to give some sort of variance on the side of the building, and then they also have a connection into the building. What happens with that variance that we gave on the side? Does that now? And I'm sorry that I should have emailed you and said, "Look at what we did," because there was something about, I don't know. I can't tell you. Was it, was egress, or was it?
I have a big recollection of that now that you bring it up--
Yeah.
But I can't, I can't recall.
Director Cool is--
Members Swenson and council, what that was is on their north side, they have a stairway that goes into the lower level, and that encroaches into the right-of-way. So there's actually an encroachment agreement that was recorded back to the property that if they were to reconstruct that building is that they would have to vacate or not be within the right-of-way. And so that encroachment agreement would go away.
So whether it stays as this joint parcel and it was torn down and rebuilt, or whether it gets sold to be something else and gets torn down, then that encroachment would go away?
That's correct, yes.
So it doesn't really matter moving forward for that?
Right.
Okay. And then what about the way that you get currently from the main part of the Spilon into this building? What happens to that once you separate these two out? If you tear it down, it needs separation from the main building, or it doesn't? Is there a, what would the, if this were to be subdivided off, torn down, and sold and rebuilt into something else, what would it, what would they be looking at for available space to build and what they could build?
They could build up to the FAR that's allowed in this, is up to 1.5 in this district. You can go up to a 1.0 FAR and rely on the parking ramps for the parking. Anything above that, they have to provide parking on their site.
Okay.
On this, on this last page, I see on the east-west side of the building, building encroaches .6 and .5. Does that factor into the subdivision, or is that another encroachment that runs with the parcel and has to be dealt with?
Yeah, that would have, that's a non-conforming condition. They would just continue.
Okay. Thanks.
So I think Member Swenson raised an interesting issue, and that is, you know, there's that little walkway behind the building there, which used to be the restaurant. So does that stay preserved as a walkway, or could somebody build up to the common wall?
It could build up to the common wall.
On the newly created--
You could build up to the common wall. It would have to be fire-rated, but they could.
And then what would the setback on the street be from France? If I'm looking at the current setback, that sidewalk on France we have is not particularly deep.
Yeah, the way the code reads up there is you can just match the structure on either side. So whether it's on 49--
So they only one structure on one side because they're a corner lot?
Yep. So they could, they would just be able to match on the one side. On 49th, they would match the Spilon building.
Right.
And then on France, they would match the building to the south.
Okay. Other questions for Director Teague? All right. Thank you. I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter?
Should I move that we close the public hearing?
You can. There is no one coming forward, and no one has voiced a--
Second.
Request to testify. We got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
I would move this as long as we know that that inability to extend out where that stairway is and that non-conforming north wall goes with this subdivision, this new subdivision, then I'm comfortable with it.
Is there a way to have that language filed with the county so that it's not dependent on the occasion notice to--
Let's ask Roger about that. It's a function of what, Roger? What are the legal implications here?
We can put together a document filing it, but nothing is changed by this plat. The encroachment agreement is still the encroachment agreement, and what it says is, it still says.
So it's only a function if something comes forward for approval as new construction, which it would only be coming forward for approval at this level if it were not otherwise meeting code. Otherwise, it would be staff approval.
It would extinguish the non-conformities?
Yeah. If they tear it down.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not quite that simple. If you tear down a, tear down a non-conforming building, you can build it the same set, with the same footprint. You just can't expand it.
And it wouldn't make any sense to want to keep your encroachment on the north side and not build it forward into the area in the front yard. So, okay. Then I think I'm comfortable that we're covered. Director, will you look like you were about to say something? Do you have it, did you have anything to add? Okay. Okay.
Going to give Roger some legal advice?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We've got resolution 2013-43. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council and community comment?
I think I'd like to at least note that we already did actually have one community comment that got mixed in with our public hearing on the sidewalk.
Mary Ames.
Mary Ames for the church in--
Richfield.
Richfield.
Richards on 76th Street, having space available, I think, for community use.
So I'll recognize that that was public comment for the sake of public comment. How about that?
Good. Thank you. All right. Moving on to reports and recommendations, a portion of the agenda, the first matter before us there is 2013, resolution 2013-41, accepting various donations.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center and the Park and Rec Department, including that, I think it's a twins gift, isn't it? Garden park baseball field renovation came into the, through the Edina Baseball Association, $100,000. So that's nice. All those donors' names will be posted on the website.
And that was one of those things that we passed already on the consent agenda, was that the baseball field--
Field improvements.
Improvements.
Yeah. Thank you.
I also note Whole Foods of Edina, that was for the community garden project.
Okay. And now we're on to sketch plan review for 7151 York Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor.
Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this is located down in the southeast corner of the city, just north of the YMCA. This is a property that's owned currently PSR IV. It's our planned senior residential district. The site is just under six acres in size. It exists today with the 12-story Continental Gardens building, 264 units. Here's a picture of the building today. What the applicant is proposing to do and looking for sketch plan review comment on is building a four-story attached 76-unit assisted living complex. They're currently proposing it to be located on the east side of the building. So this rendering is taken from York, showing the existing building. Couple other elevations. There would be a skyway connection made from the existing building into the new building. Couple of other renderings of it, the site plan. The city of Richfield, located to the east roadway that comes through here. The, some of the issues with this project, currently the comprehensive plan establishes a maximum for density, for high-density residential, which this site is guided in the comprehensive plan, at 30 units per acre. Currently, the density on this site is about 45 units an acre. With the new units proposed, it would go up to 58 units per acre. Just to quickly show you some of our higher-density developments in town. We do have a number that are, that do exceed that 30 units per acre designation in the comprehensive plan. Prior to the 2008 comprehensive plan, in regard to high-density residential, when these developments went in, the comprehensive plan generally just talked about density based on proximity to low-density uses and the level of transit service available. So we didn't have a cap prior to 2008. So this request would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan to reconcile that density issue that we have. Some of the things that we talked about with the planning commission would be to distinguish between senior housing and market-rate, all-age-type housing. Could be one way where we could address the density issue. Some of the other, so in general, the planning commission felt that would be an appropriate way to address density in the comprehensive plan. And then a lot of the additional comments that were given were in regard to suggesting sustainable building design, being creative in regard to sustainable, sustainable principles with the new and the existing building, and also creating a pedestrian-friendly environment. And also did talk about consideration of flipping the building to the other side, to the York Avenue side, and engaging the street. And so the applicant had indicated a willingness to explore that option, at least. Terry Sirmak is here, the applicant, to address any issues that the city council may have. But with that, I can stand for questions, or we could bring Ms. Sirmak up to make a presentation.
Question for Director Teague, or do you want to bring Terry Sirmak up?
Director Teague, you and I spoke earlier before the meeting this evening about the comprehensive plan issue, and I actually tried to do research this afternoon. And what I came up with was that the draft had no upper limit in it until November, beyond November 2008, but the final version has the upper limit in it. And I also couldn't find anything in work session or study session minutes or anything in my notes. What I did find, however, was a map that at some point in the process had been drawn, giving development capacity for the different areas. And there was a point at which everyone made a decision to bring the density in the new comp plan back to the density in the old comp plan, I think because of some of the infrastructure issues that we've discussed in conjunction with some other projects. And so that's what I have for history, and I don't know what this particular project would do to that formula. But as much as I was able to learn in my, I have a personally redlined copy of every draft of the comp plan that we went through, plus notes from every meeting. And again, what I can only find is that at some point we made adjustment based on projection.
Okay.
That's, that's an interesting point, because with a assisted living use, in many ways it's low-impact. In transportation, perhaps, it's low-impact.
Yes.
Parking.
Yes.
But the utility capacity is probably about the same for a normal market-rate unit.
Right.
The in-ground utility. So where is the cap if you're going to allow for more flexibility for a lower-impact use of AL? There has to be some type of reasonable cap on the, on the density allowed. And how do you determine where that, that is? Is it, is it 58? Why not, you know, that's where I'm struggling, trying to find out where that, how we get to that number, and how that would fit with our overall capacity, and we don't want to overload it, you know, past what we could allow for other projects in the area as well.
And again, I was just trying to, so we could have-- And again, I was just trying to, so we could have some illumination. I was just trying to find out where the number came from, and that was the best I was able to come up with.
Yeah, I think both of you raised interesting points. And then, you know, Member Sprague, you're raising the issue of if we allow some sort of high-density residential for seniors category, what should it be? You know, and we don't have any, we need some input on that from the planning commission. I mean, they're suggesting the same thing, that where you have seniors and you have less demand on the transportation system, less demand for parking, same demand for what's under the street in terms of use. What's an appropriate level of density for something like that? Because we've got this issue not only here, but we've got it over on 65th and France now.
Yep.
And their proposed density at 65th and France, if they were to build what they?
Was it 50, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's going to be up there, similar to this.
Okay.
So if we build 10, 50 to 60 acre sites, how's that, how is our utility infrastructure going to be?
Well, historically, there is a different density limit in the PSR and as Plan Senior Residential. And looking back at the minutes of when that was discussed and created, it was the intention of the council then to create senior housing that was both affordable and livable. So they set a minimum unit size and they set a maximum unit size. They decreased the parking requirements for some of the reasons that we're discussing. And they increased the density to recognize the social good of providing this kind of housing. So that adjustment already was made. Whether or not it encompasses either 65th and France or this, I don't know.
Member Swenson.
Director Houle, do you have a comment on the water and sewer capabilities of this side of town? This is the, this goes to Richfield, right, for sewer?
That does. The sanitary sewer drains into the trunk line that goes into Richfield. And actually, the Metropolitan Council actually put a relief sewer in the last few years when they did the bike trail over there.
That's right.
So, so we have plenty of sewage capacity into Richfield. We just have to, we'll be after analyzing to get it to that point to the Richfield border.
It's our Bloomington one for something like Seventy-seventh Street project at Pentagon Park that's the issue, correct?
That was an issue, but they have upgraded that line down there also. So right now, we really don't have any issues except just more internal issues. And once they get past the sketch plan, is that we take the units and we put it into our model and we verify that we have capacity in our lines, both sewer and, and water.
How does that preclude future planning, though? Because if we hyper-densify for senior housing this area, at some point, we're going to cut off other future uses. That's, that's what I'm concerned about. The model won't give us that. It'll just tell us what we have now and if it fits in.
Till the glass is full.
Right.
Manager Neil had his pen up. I'm recognizing that.
Is that what he's doing?
Trying to be polite, too.
Don't count Mary. She's just
I was going to ask Director Houle that, I mean, Met Council has a chance to weigh in on this, do they not? And if they're, and give us a sense of what the capacity is and if we're approaching it, or if they plan to expand it or, or not. I don't believe that we would be able to approve a plan at the council or the city level that would not fit within the capacity that they have available for us to use of their sewer system. Is that true?
That's true. And actually, Manager Neil and council is that when we put the last comprehensive plan together, we projected out 20, 30 years out into the future what, what the uses are. And the Met Council actually approved that plan. So what we have projected out into the future for, for uses, which was somewhat based off of the Greater Southdale Plan that had a very dense or higher-density use, uses, land uses in that, the Greater Southdale area, we kind of base the sewer flows or projections off of those, off of those numbers. So, you know, I can't guarantee that we have capacity for whatever you want to do in the Greater Southdale area, but it's, but we do have a lot of capacity in those lines.
Are you saying that, I'm sorry. Are you saying that, that we've, we have capacity in the next 20 to 30 years for our comp plan density? Because we keep, we're blowing past our comp, I mean, almost, I mean, quite a bit. Not a, not a small fudge. This is quite a bit, a percentage past that. That's, how do we, how do we factor that into our long-term strategy?
Well, actually, what the Met Council did is they took the Greater Southdale Plan that was just received by the council here. And they took those numbers and they applied it to the interceptor that goes through Richfield. And that's how they base the size of, of the relief sewer that went, went through Richfield.
And that was more intense than our comprehensive plan? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, yep. It was.
It also took into account our, we changed our zoning ordinance to allow housing in our commercial areas. So they've taken that additional density into account as well. That's a pretty significant number.
And, and we've also, as we did it to Weston, as I recall, we've, we've made them build in storage tanks underneath as part of the project so they could store it if we ran into a problem.
Actually, what we did on that one was, was we had a, the original approval included a peak storage tank. And then, once we got into the design of it, is, is how do you actually design a peak storage tank? Because you're designing it because of all the inflow and infiltration you have in the system. So if you recall, we actually went back to the council and we had to change it, that, that they did an I&amp;I study on the whole Galleria site. And so we actually shaved off quite a bit of inflow and infiltration off the Galleria site. Underneath the restoration hardware, all that, that below building parking, all of that actually drained into the sanitary sewer system. And we, we, the gallery actually changed that that went into the storm sewer system. So that was an area that actually flooded on a regular basis. So the whole goal was, is really to get rid of the I&amp;I out of the system. And so we accomplished that on the Galleria site. And as we tighten up the system over time, we're going to be generating more capacity in our, in our system itself.
What about public safety services? And, you know, as we go, if we go to higher-density senior, yeah. So our, our EMT services are going up, and how do we, how do we project for that? Because
Well, they're pretty well-positioned. At least the EMT services are. And in terms of police services, the, this kind of unit does, has a very low demand.
You know,
Okay.
I'm responding to a plan, to you, and I don't see anyone in the audience listening. So do we have anyone here listening to our responses?
Right back there. Why don't you, why don't you walk up here, please?
That will give me at least some sense that I'm talking to someone other than Kerry. Then I want to talk about the plan calls for moderately priced, affordable alternative to current market rate facilities.
Let's bring up Ms. Sirmak.
I don't know what that is. And then, as the follow-up sentence, it says, "It would be a modestly priced, private-pay model with a small set aside for county elderly waiver units," which I know what that is, "if available." You know, we have a problem in our city with finding units, whether it's senior units, apartment units, or housing that's affordable. So for me, if I'm going to increase density for seniors, this is an opportunity for me to want to make that word "affordable" be part of it. But I don't know if your, your definition of affordable and mine are the same.
My name is Terry Sirmak.
Pick up that handheld mic, please. There you go.
My name is Terry Sirmak, Sirmak Roads Architects. And my address is 1580 Fulham Street in Falcon Heights. I, I don't want to speak for the developer necessarily. I don't have a lot of information on the affordability range. But I will say that what we're proposing is a building that would accommodate residents who are currently living in Yorktown Continental, which is a very affordable senior independent living, and giving those residents who are aging in place the opportunity to move into more, higher levels of care, memory care and assisted living across the skyway and keep that connection between the residents of the both facilities. So I know it is targeted to affordability, but we could come back with more information on that.
Part of your job I'm going to give you tonight, then, is that that is what I'm asking for, is what is the plan for affordability in this? And how will it serve, obviously, people currently living there and other? You know, we have a lot of seniors that have lived in their homes for a long time, maybe looking for alternate housing, but their only asset right now is to sell their home. Now, that doesn't work for elderly waiver, obviously. But I think it's really important that we provide for those seniors in our community, and I need a way to do that.
Yeah, you, the percentage of elderly waiver units in the building that they are going to guarantee is something we need to know.
Yeah.
And then discuss if that is adequate for what we feel the needs are in the community.
I like the way you said that.
Member Bennett.
I know what the building has been operating as now. And I know what the standards have been for the setting of rents. Do you know if the building is, if the new owner plans to continue operating the building with those same terms and conditions?
Yes, they do, yeah.
Okay, then, Member Swenson, I think your question's answered in the affirmative. But we can definitely get more information, but there, there are standards that have to be met.
Okay, good. Member Rendell.
Thanks. Looking at the improvements that need to happen in the existing building, there are some mentioned here. Common area improvements, adding to, adding to this complex with the additional residents in the assisted living quarters, what improvements to common areas are going to take place in the existing building?
The existing building will have, the entire first floor is going to be remodeled. But I would point out that all of the assisted living dwelling units will have their own common area services in the new construction. They'll have a dining facility and a commercial kitchen, lounges, nursing staff offices, et cetera. So it will be built as an independent facility, but linked by the bridge. But, but it's true, we're doing $12 million-plus in improvements to the existing building. A lot of building envelope upgrades, windows and insulation, interior finishes, doors, apartment unit upgrades.
Okay. So do you anticipate that there will be a lot of people going back and forth from building to building?
We do.
Is this pretty typical in a situation like this?
There are precedents for this type of independent living connected to assisted living. And we think there will be traffic back and forth, both residents from the independent living going to avail themselves of the food service that's provided in assisted living, and then just assisted living residents coming to activities that are held for the residents in the Yorktown.
That was another of my questions. Is there food service in the current building?
No.
Okay. And so there wouldn't be additional in, in the new, newly refurbished building, the food service is going to be in the new building?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. I'm looking at the rough drawing on the back. It says there's the 76-unit assisted living building, and there are four levels to it?
Yes.
Okay. So levels two, three, and four each have 25 units? Okay. And Level One appears to have 19 units, which is more than 76. So where's the 76?
We think that we're going to be using more of the floor space for the common area needs for the residents. So we, the quick sketch plan had footprints for dwelling units, and we think more of that floor space is going to be used for common area space, a larger dining room, lounges, cafe. So we had to take out some of the unit floor space and came out and arrived at that 76 number.
And it says there's a pool. Where is the pool?
The pool is just a therapy pool. It's basically like a large whirlpool tub for therapy. So it won't be a swimming pool.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Let's see, is there anything else? Staff. How many staff is, currently works in the existing building, if any? And then, how many staff will be in the new building?
The existing building has a property management and maintenance staff. I believe it's four or five people.
Okay.
Pretty lean operation, and we're expecting 12 people on staff.
So those 12 would be new hires?
New hires in the new addition building.
In the new addition. And then the staff would stay the same in the existing building?
Yes.
Oh, right. And then, oh, kitchens. What are the kitchens like in the assisted living?
In the dwelling units?
Mm-hmm.
They'll be compact kitchens. Actually, with three different levels of care, we'll have some units with more on independent living end of the spectrum with kitchens that are designed for cooking and full refrigerators, et cetera.
So you have full range and full refrigerator in some?
In some. And then, memory care units would have non or perhaps a microwave or a mini fridge. So we'll have kind of a spectrum.
All right. And then, transit availability right on York. So, so you've got a bus stop within a block, anyway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And well, part of the site work proposed for the entire project would be strong sidewalk connections from the assisted living out to York and bus access.
All right. Thank you.
Member Swenson.
Just reacting to the plan, I would say that I would almost prefer not to have the connection between the two buildings go all the way through for automobiles. I would consider, instead of a second-floor skyway, a first-floor crossing. I think it's friendlier that way, because it goes from first floor to first floor, and those are really your general public kind of congregating. I don't see a need to be able to drive a car all the way around the building in a U. If there's a reason for that, that I don't know, based on your experience as an architect, I would be willing to listen to that. But on my first look at it, I don't see why it has to be attached by a second-floor skyway. I would rather see it attached by a first. I like the connection better that way. And I like, as we talk about pedestrian-friendly, keeping people from driving all the way around in a circle sometimes creates a better pedestrian situation than else. The other thing is, when we talk about getting out and in on a sidewalk, the only sidewalk I see right now, and I haven't recently looked at your site to know what sidewalk connects the building you have today with York, Xerxes, but I see a sidewalk that goes to the end of some parking, and then I don't see where it really gets out to the street. So when you come back, as we talk about pedestrian-friendly, I want to know what, how it connects, where it connects. Is it always next to the trash truck driving in? Or is it a boulevard sidewalk that gets out with some trees? I think for us, as you maybe sat through our earlier discussion on putting a pathway through a park, if you were here earlier, we're trying to stay way more focused as a community on transportation that's not just foot, I mean, not just vehicle. And so for the workers or for someone that's still mobile, that becomes very important here.
I agree, and I
Is there a comment?
I just wanted to say that's, we would certainly come back with a much more developed site plan and landscape plan. And one of the ideas that we have is to make a walking trail around, through the property itself and connect to the park on the east, so that we can have both, all the way from York back to the Parkway, a really nice walking path for residents.
Member Sprague.
You can see our heads nodding when you say things like that.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's an element that's very important, not only onsite circulation, but connection to the other amenities we're taking the time to build out. Are there memory care units?
There will be some.
Okay. And then, tell me a little bit about, you went through Planning Commission. They talked about flipping the building, as is suggested in the comp plan, to get the buildings pulled up to the street and make a more friendly pedestrian environment. Can you tell me your reaction to that and any further thinking on that since the planning commission?
We did take a look at that, and the available footprint area is quite a bit less on the west side between the existing building and York. It's a narrower site, and it has the automobile driveways on both ends. So there's a smaller footprint. It would, in order to have a 76-unit building, we'd have to be even higher in, we'd have to go five or six stories high. The other thing that was a problem was we need some driveway length to get to the underground parking. We'll have one level of parking below the assist, new assisted living. We'll have one level of parking below the new assisted living building, and we need some distance and ramp access to get down to that level, and we couldn't do that with the driveway right in front. But our thought was that as part of the existing building renovation, we would take another look at the birmingham that is now between the existing building and York Avenue. It has these huge berms and trees along there that sort of blocks your view of any occupancy on the ground floor beyond the berms. So we would look at re-landscaping that area to make it more visibly connected to the comings and goings out of the existing building.
And just to pivot back to your point for a second, I'm thinking of my grandfather's building in Iowa, which is a continuous care community. They've got separate buildings, it's a campus, they've got independent living apartments, and then AL and further down the care spectrum. But they are ground floor connections. You change elevations with elevators in the building, but then they're on grade connections, they're not above ground, and it makes for a very nice walking experience for all ages and abilities. It also makes the building seem more connected. They have little sitting areas in the connecting pieces, which is really nice, so it doesn't feel like you've left the building. So I think that amenity would be a nice innovation to bring to the project.
Okay, I've got a few comments that are site-related. Member Brindle, you go first, then I'll go.
All right. Looking at pickup and drop-off areas, I can see that's a reason why you'd have that driveway go around the back, is to have the pickup area and drop-off for the assisted living building?
That was exactly one of the reasons to have, and also the fire truck circulation all the way around the existing high-rise.
And then pickup area for the existing building?
Mm-hmm.
Where is that?
That's in the front, on the west side.
It is the front?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there kind of a circle drive planned so that someone could drive right up to the front door and drop someone off? Because it looks to me like you've got parking right up to the sidewalk at the existing building. Is there anything planned to give that more of a, more of a drop-off area?
On the existing building?
Mm-hmm.
We are changing the, right now there's a little wrought iron fence that comes out on both sides, and we're going to enhance the island planting on either side of that. That sidewalk will come all the way out to the driveline itself, so you could actually approach.
Okay, so it'll come to the driveline?
Yes, it'll come up to the driveline.
All right. And then at the assisted living building, there's a couple of not straight lines there. Is that more of a circle drive to the door?
There would be a drop-off right to the driveline there, too, and it's covered by the skyway connection. So it's a covered drop-off area.
So moving that skyway down to a ground-level walkway between the buildings, then you'd have people walking where the cars would be driving?
And you'd have to have a wider turnaround space for cars to approach, drop off, and turn around and go back.
Okay, that's a consideration.
Different traffic pattern.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm comfortable with the notion of your senior campus, and you've got the new building on the backside, on the rich field side. I think that's okay with me. I like the way the plan lays out. But I think, as my colleagues have said, all the pedestrian connections are really important, and us being able to probably have room to make sure that it would be, in a perfect world, we would have boulevard-style sidewalks along York Avenue, so there'd be some separation from the street. We wouldn't be behind the bulkhead. I don't know exactly what's over there, but we'd like wide sidewalks as far from the street as we can get them. And so you keep that in mind, I think, and plus the other connections that Member Sprague talked about. I thought Member Swenson did a nice job of telling you about her goals for seniors, which are synonymous, I think, or consistent with what the rest of us would have in terms of goals. So having this be affordable, not only in the main building, but in the other building, is a good thing. Is there anything about the approval of the assisted living project that drives the amount of money that you'll spend in the main building?
No, they're two separately funded projects, completely separate.
So we can count on you spending $12 million to rehab, refurbish the big building, the main building, regardless of what happens with the other project?
And that has come in for a building permit review, that construction package.
When you do come back, I'm going to want to, I think we all want to know more about these county elderly waiver units.
Sure.
Because, you know, I don't know how the county funds, if it's based on taxes from Hennepin County plus some money from the state. But to the extent there's any federal money involved, with the uncertainty as to where the Affordable Care Act comes into play here, I think we better know that. So the rest of my comments really deal with the notion itself of what kind of a project this is. And we may be a pocket of success on senior housing, but I'm not sure about that. And at some point, I worry about saturation, because we've got one going up on Crosstown right now behind the fire station on Tracy. It's got 139 units. We know that there's a project coming back to us on 65th and France with the same sort of high-density proposal that you've got. And while we typically don't get into market business, I think there is a legitimate concern about how much is too much. And so I think we'd want to see your market study. I know we would. We'd want to see your market study. And I don't know how many seniors live in Edina, but I'd like to see your, I'd like to see what they call your penetration rates for what you're projecting in terms of the number of seniors in Edina or in the neighborhood that would move in here. So we can see, or get some advice on whether or not we agree with you on that, that penetration rate. Because we're going to have the same issue over on 65th and France. We need to think this through pretty carefully right now. So I think that's it for me now. I think my colleagues have raised a lot of questions about the project itself, and I'm comfortable with what they've raised, and Member Bennett has thought of something else she wants to ask you about.
With my, I have been in Yorktown Commons every itch of every floor, so I am familiar with it as it's operated, and it's a very happy place and seems to be providing wonderful service. And I think it is, as it currently operates, filling a niche. Yes, we have a lot, we have a good amount of multi-unit housing, and yes, we have a good amount of senior housing in the community, but we don't have senior housing available at different price points. And I think that's a niche that Yorktown Commons has been filling really, really well in a part of town that offers a lot of amenities to the people who live there. And it's on the road to walkability. What I, so that, if that purpose continues to be the purpose, and we get a good explanation of how these additional units or the assisted living units are going to continue filling that purpose, then it would be differentiated from not only what is here today, but also some of the projects that are proposed or under construction. So I share my colleagues' interest in knowing more about that. And that would also be what, to me, would be the justification for departing from our code. I also, this is a directional request to staff, I need to know more about what the caps are or what the densities are for senior, plans senior PSR, how this differs from that. I know it exceeds it, but by how much? And then also just why did we set that cap that we set, and when do we run out of other options? I think we need, as a body, to have some clarity on that as we would move forward in considering this. But again, I do see, I see a public good in what I know of Yorktown Commons as it currently operates.
That's good to hear.
And do support that. Not to design your building for you, but I'm looking at, looking at one of the, A10 is the page, oh, the view looking northeast, looking for a space. You've said that you need the end of the building for access to the garage. This, I like the amount of green space that you're showing about around the building. I'm wondering if you could maybe do a shift with some of the green space and have it exist instead of roadway between the buildings going to Member Swenson's point and Member Sprague's point, and probably Member Brindle's as well, of having that main level transition. Unfortunately, my parents are no longer with us, but when my mother was in a nursing home for the two weeks, I think, that she was there, it was well-connected to hospice care and hospital care, and that one, that level, and not having to get people into elevators to move from building to building, I think, really does make a difference. So if you were to try to have that main floor transition and green space between the buildings on the south end, where your building takes a turn, if there was some flex in where you could locate that crossing and commons area, could you also then group it with an entrance, and rather than think of widening the space between the building, actually sort of create a circle, as it were, at that south end? Again, not to design your project for you.
But I'd certainly take that hard, and I think that would be part of the next step, going from what was really just an initial concept to really studying, okay, what would our schematic design options really be for the property? We would certainly look at that.
What it also would offer you is it would preserve some of the green space that the residents in Yorktown Commons are currently looking out on. And instead of the view at the back of the building, the east side just being pavement and then the roof of the building next, the assisted living addition, they would have, you would have the opportunity for some trees and plantings in that space as well.
I think we've learned through this process, it's that we're not really redesigning for you, but we're trying to be as clear as we can about our reaction to what you give us. Not that we're rejecting what you give us, we're just telling you what we're looking for, and this is the only way to do it. The first couple of sketch review was like, oh gee, this is nice, this is nice, and then they came back and we said, but we really want this, this, and this. So I think as a process of sketch review, and Carrie will agree, we were getting better at it. We've learned we have to talk more.
That's wonderful. I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
I think that's, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I must say we're encouraged, and I think we'll be taking a look at the next step and doing a little more further development, a market study, and a little more conceptual design development and pursuit of the next stage, and hopefully come back and see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Correspondence petitions, anything other than what's on the dais this evening? All right, very good. Mayor, Councilwoman, Member Sprague?
That quickly, huh? We were talking a lot about the improvements happening in the Cornelia area, one of which is a park master plan study and another look at Fred Richards, that green space. As part of that analysis of envisioning what else could go there, I think we should also be looking at what would the operational effect be if we were to take Fred Richards offline? And so I want to ask Manager Neil if we can have that analysis done concurrent with these other studies that we're doing so we know how that would impact the Braemar operation. Because I know as the mayor said, rounds are down and are probably down to stay. And I think we want to know how that would help our enterprise operation. Grand View, I know we're coming up on the second phase, and I just want to reiterate, I'm not sure what this is going to lead to this evening, but before we go out too far down the development path, whether it's RFI or RFQ, I would really like to have a conversation about perhaps using this commission that we're putting together to further define the public realm space. And the reason why I'm bringing this up again is, I think, before it goes out to the development community to look at the overall uses, the trigger point needs to be our public domain that is mooring this development. It's part of the framework discussion. And I think it would suit our needs well to get that more defined in the beginning rather than leaving that up to fate at a later date. So just something to converse about further. We got a flyer on Yorktown Garden opening on May 20th, 6:30 PM. I hope I can make that with the rest of you or some of you. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Manager Neil and I serve on the Comcast Commission for our five-city area. And one of the things that came up, and we've gotten a little bit of feedback so far from one of our residents, is that there's a charge that people now see on their bill for those little square digital conversion boxes that used to be free, that they offered you for free, up to three of them. Well, they now charge you a buck ninety-nine a month, and we are proceeding with a piece of, well, a letter, a strongly written letter from our attorney for our group to Comcast, telling them that we will be watching the current litigation that another community has started. It might be an area that we have some control over the pricing, it may not. We don't know, and that's really what this litigation will tell us. We also will be sending that letter on to our Washington representatives since it's the federal communications that controls this and nothing from the state. So that's my Comcast update. That Grand View group that you brought up, I, we haven't talked yet about how we're going to populate that group. And I actually was going to recommend that, because we talked about populating it from the people that have already been involved with the original study group, that it might be possible for us to, if we were given a list again of all the spots that might be open, that we could send you our recommendations. You could see if there's any consensus on it. Thank you for choosing that word. And if that doesn't work, then we're going to have to come up with a work session to work on it or something. But I was hoping that, given the names of the people that have already worked on it and the slots that would be open, my guess is that we'll have a fair amount of crossover on those spots, and that might be a way to get that populated.
And you have already, in the work session, remember, you gave some indication to some of our boards and commissions that you were allocating a spot or two for them?
Oh, absolutely, but we may even...
So they're picking them out right now, right?
So you're talking about the two at large and the two?
We have two from the neighborhood and two at large, I think. Did we have that?
Is that what we settled on?
We'll kind of reassemble our notes from the work session.
But we also have some property owners. We know who's been involved in there. We also have some renters or...
We'll bring that back to you on the next council meeting.
That'd be great, because I think we should probably get that filled in the next few weeks.
What do you think about the scope issue?
I think that it would be hard to send out an RFI without at least some definition of public space. And I don't think it's square feet. I don't think it's exact use. I think it just has to be part of the conversation.
I thought that we had discussed Bill Nuenendorf and Bruce Jacobson working on it. And then I think whatever this new group is, this CAC, should look at it first before it comes back to us.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why I want the CAC set up, because I really want them to look at the RFI before it goes out. I know that Bruce will really pay attention to what the group brought before us already, and that it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. We already have the wheel written. So I thought that was why I recommended that he be involved, at least in writing it up, because I thought it was important. He's very vested in what that group did and what they brought forward.
I hear what you're saying, but I think before they go RFI, they should have that public realm discussion.
Yes. Oh, right. Or in conjunction with maybe, you know, here's an idea, here's an idea for an RFI. I mean, they may be happening at the same time, but the R, right, but the RFI doesn't go out until that discussion happens. How about I say that?
Yep, yep.
And then I was going to bring up the Concord sidewalk, but I'm going to let Member Bennett do it. But I will say, in setting the table for it, that I got an email last week that Director Hu is been apprised of, Director Huol is been apprised of, that the Edina Public Schools for Concord have now taken away the ability of the house across the street on School Road from being able to do anything but take a bus. They no longer can walk to school. So we talk about paths and due town and healthy and safe routes to schools. This kind of took a huge, major step forward in being on the emergency safe routes to schools list. And with that, I'll pass it on to Member Bennett.
Yeah, on your one topic with respect to the CAC, I did meet with a couple of the planning commissioners and I think there are, there are some of them that were on the, on the big group or in participants in the big group and I've had an indication that Michael Schroeder and Kevin Staunton would both be willing to serve on the CAC as a planning commission, in the planning commission role. And I know we've talked about Mike Fisher as a citizen at large, being a former planning commission member, being the potential chair, and he's indicated his willingness to do that as well. So we'd have that sort of core expertise there if people want to think about those as potential nominees in the, in the submissions that they make. So, Member Bennett.
Thank you. First, the Concord sidewalk and my filing system worked and I found the feasibility study that we were given. It was sort of a mock-up feasibility study, but it has a lot of elements in it, dated on it May 22nd, 2012, when we were considering the franchise fee policy. And Director Huol presented us then with two options, A and B. A was an option that would involve resident assessment because the sidewalk would extend all the way from Concord to Normandale Road. Option B, which would be evenly split between this, was proposed to be evenly split between the school district and the city, was from Ruth Drive to Concord. So it spanned that entrance to the school. Member Swenson, what is it that you were contemplating? The full to Normandale or the, the Ruth Drive spanning the entrance to the school?
My contemplation was to build as much of it as we could if we were going to go. I did a Deutown walk with that neighborhood. They are very enthusiastic about it, including the retired people that have lived there for years that see the need for it.
So a rare consensus.
It's a rare consensus in this neighborhood and I know it's tight on the curve, but I think Director Huol, that if you go from Concord on the school property and then you want to take the turn, then is it that one house plus our link to Norman, to the sidewalk that's on Normandale? And that would finish it all the way from one sidewalk to another, all the way through.
That's correct, yes.
Can you give us some context though? Because there are other schools already have connections and this is one school that's lacking that, that connection.
It has no sidewalk to its front door.
So I just, to put it in context for the public discussion, this is, it's an immediate need because Concord lacks the cement that some of the other elementary schools.
Well, every other elementary school has a sidewalk to their front door, but this elementary school.
Well, I've raised it as an equity issue because actually in the last few years, we've completed some missing links. The sidewalk was built from the Highlands Park up Doncaster with a link into the school and to Highlands Elementary. With the street reconstruction project that was just completed in the Creek Valley School neighborhood, there was a missing link of sidewalk that was added for convenience of, of parents and children, drops off, drop-offs, pickups, and I believe that there's an auxiliary bus that picks up at that area as well. Normandale, of course, Normandale Elementary located in the oldest high school, has that sidewalk network around it. High school, the middle schools have that network. But again, for the elementary schools, with Countryside Elementary School, there was a reconstruction project that involved the parking lots, a redesigned parent pickup and drop-off. So that, the pedestrian movements there were also addressed and with the reconstruction of Tracy Avenue, new crosswalks. So there, and new crosswalks also near Creek Valley Elementary.
Enhanced crosswalks.
Enhanced crosswalks. Reconstruction of West Seventieth Street, again, some attention to the intersection is also speed reduction. So there have been pedestrian-focused innovations at all those areas. Concord last had something done in 2007 with that street reconstruction, when there was the sidewalk added along Concord.
It was just to replace that, it could already have that.
It kind of suffered because it's in that complex with all these other schools, so they've all, you know, it's competing for, for a need with, versus the other schools that are self standalone. So I can appreciate how it developed.
But you can wave to the school from the sidewalk along Concord, but you have to cross a field and a parking lot to get there. There is no sidewalk that connects the sidewalk from Concord with the entrance to the school.
Well, actually, you can't go in that door because it's locked.
It's the back door and it's locked, yeah. For school security, you have to go around the front.
School security changed things.
Well, the feasibility, the feasibility, right, the feasibility study was mocked up and at that point we were looking at some price differential. If the council wishes, I will move that a feasibility study be updated to include option A, if that's the council consensus, and then that a public, well, is a public hearing then scheduled because they're, well, no, because the resident part now would be paid by franchise fee, correct?
Yeah, well, yes.
That would be the discussion.
So, right, project cost for option A was three hundred and twelve, estimated $312,000 with a 25, 25, 50% split, 25% school district, 25% city and 50% resident assessment.
Right. And I think what we would say now is we would not assess the cost to the property owners.
So the school would still pick up, be asked for a 25% contribution?
It's always worth asking the school.
Yeah, I think, well, it's safe, safe routes to school, definitely. And it's, it goes to, if, if you can walk rather than bus, it goes to school operations costs, it reduces operations costs.
I'll second the update to the feasibility.
Discussion.
And not, and not to scuttle a good plan, but let me just give you some additional context. I, I'm, I know, I'm sorry.
Evil, evil, evil.
The, the, the plan we had imagined for these sidewalk construction projects was that we would submit a, a list of them to the ETC who would give a recommendation to you to consider.
I have their recommendation in an email.
Is it from a member of the ETC or is it from the ETC?
Oh, I don't know. Director Huol, you've worked with the ETC, maybe you'd better speak to that.
If they haven't actually recommended, recommended that, but maybe Manager Neil, if you could continue with, with our, with the plan.
And then the, the ETC would prepare a recommendation that would be submitted to you, then you would consider it, amend it, improve it, however, however you wish, then that would be our marching orders to, to go forward.
Well, it's in their minutes from their last meeting. But were you at the last meeting?
Yes, I was. The, the last meeting actually in, on April 18th, I believe it was, they, we, actually at staff comments, as I brought up, that we have, we're sitting on seven projects that were either petition projects or the city council yourself has asked for a feasibility study to be done. And they're kind of all over the board, different types of sidewalk projects. And so what we, I was asked, I was kind of initiating and was at the next meeting here next week is that I'd bring, bring forward those seven projects and I'd ask them to prioritize those seven projects. And I would, looking at the prioritization of, of the draft living streets policy is, is the school road sidewalk is going to rate really high as, you know, if they apply those, those priority type systems. So I, I think it gives them a good opportunity to, to kind of do a draft prioritization of sidewalks, go through that exercise. I think we're going to come to the same point that, that the school road will, will come up pretty, pretty high unless they bring up some other issues with some of the other sidewalks. But I, but I, but I'd recommend that we go back, that you go bring it, that I'd bring it back to the ETC and that the next city council meeting is that we'd have that list of how they'd be prioritized.
And then we can always, if we had a different priority, then we'd make our own decision, but that makes sense.
Presumably, like you do with all other boards and commissions, you'd give them some level of deference.
Right.
But i- in the end, it is your decision as it is to, to how we, how we spend these dollars. It's a local decision, it ultimately rests with the city council. You approved the, the process that we're using and how we're going to spend these dollars, you can amend that.
If it's coming back in, in two weeks and they're going to have the full priority schedule, I think that's probably.
I think we should not get ahead of ourselves. We asked them to do this work, let's let them finish up.
No, that's fine. The email that I got just seemed pretty clear, but I, I understand that I may be mistaken, it may only come from one person.
Well, one thing that the ETC can look at is that option B, and Member Swenson, why I asked, is, was estimated to be about, not, let's see, less than half the cost of option A with a 50/50 split between the school district and the city. So if it, if it's an issue this year of available funding and shared priorities, then I would like to consider at least solving that immediate issue of providing a walking area into the entrance to the school.
Well, you have, the problem is you have a bus walking from both sides. So you do it from Sixtieth and you have it from Concord. So if you're going to solve it, you at least have to get out to Sixtieth and if you're going to go there, then actually the rest of the sidewalk is a minor.
It's about half a block, right.
And a fair amount of this is on the school property. Have we had, have we had discussion with the school about how to do this?
Yes, we have. We have lots of discussion, yep.
Okay, I, at this point, I will withdraw my motion.
I will withdraw my second.
And then we'll look for it to come back to us in a month because the ETC meets on the third Thursday of the month, so third, third Thursday of May.
Right, that's correct.
All right.
So we'll come back June 4th? Fourth?
Correct, yes.
That would be my birthday. If it could come back on June 4th, I would be really happy about that.
Happy birthday in advance.
Thank you. I'll be expecting.
Could be a big night for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I do have a couple of other things. I, I got a call from a resident on Tracy Avenue who said that the street looks better and is much quieter, it's a huge improvement. However, school parents are still doing U-turns on Tracy, both during drop-offs and pickup times. And I don't know if the no U-turn signs have been posted, but I know that was one of the conditions of approval. So if they're not posted, yeah. I think what I, what she and I talked about was the fact that this sounded like both an education and enforcement issue, and it also sounded like there was some good opportunity for partnership with the school to be informing its parents. Because the reason for her call was that she and her husband had had plans to go out Friday evening, there was a school event. Cars were parking on the outside of the bump out. In other words, cars were parking.
It was the carnival.
And cars were parking.
Friday night.
In the bike lane. And one of them could have gone out in the middle of the street and tried to play traffic guard, but opted, they did not feel comfortable doing that and so could not get out of their driveway. It wasn't that their driveway was actually physically blocked, but their sightlines were so effectively blocked by the vehicles that were parked out in, beyond the bark, the bike lane, because the bike lane isn't as wide as a parking lane. So that also sounds like an education and enforcement issue. I know that the legislature has been discussing this and trying to take some action. I don't know where that bill stands in terms of the legality of parking in a parking lane. I, I mean, in a bike lane. But I think that, again, some education and enforcement. She did say that they did try to contact police department, but that the situation was not resolved and they had to cancel their plans. And that the bike lane is being used as a parking lane other times as well. But again, looks better and is much quieter.
I saw one biking down Cahill in the new lanes the other day and I saw a service vehicle parked. So I think from time to time, people may not understand or know and then you just have to call that non-emergency number and have a squad car come out and take care of it, if they're available.
Yep. Uh, yeah. Then air-related transportation issues. I was at the Metropolitan Airports Commission this morning for an over two-hour meeting with residents from several different Edina neighborhoods and staff from the FAA and the MAC. There is a meeting of the MSP Fair Skies Coalition at the Lynnhurst Community Center next Monday at 7:00 PM. Another meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee at 1:30 at, on Wednesday. For more information about the Fair Skies Coalition, it's MSPFairSkies.com, one word, no punctuation. There is an excellent video which Member Brindle earlier brought to our attention by clicking on Learn. It's about 13 minutes and it is information-packed. And then at the Noise Oversight Committee, more, more information about the function of that committee and its agenda can be found at MSP, what is it? I'm just going to blank. MAC Noise. MAC Noise dot, M-A-C Noise dot com, again, no punctuation, no capitalization. And I think that's it. Oh, board and commission vacancies. Were we going to be, Manager Neil, were you going to be raising that issue this evening? I know we've had some vacancies arise.
I think we got an email from.
I believe I sent an email out listing the three vacancies. You have vacancy on the, oh, help me out, the.
Human Rights and Relations, yeah.
Human Rights and Relations.
And the, heritage.
Heritage Preservation Board, yes.
Preservation and the Community Health.
Health Committee, okay, okay. And we do have, when we interviewed, we did have so many applicants that we were telling people that we would keep applications on file and look back to them. I don't know if we want to add it to a brief part of a work session, front end of a work session agenda?
We will get it on, Assistant Manager Neil will, will, Assistant Manager Kurt will, will help me get it scheduled for a work session, so you can have a few minutes.
Probably a 15-minute discussion.
Yeah, I think that should probably be.
Just to refresh our memory and go back to.
Yeah, great. We had already had some discussion about this topic and we were looking tentatively at June 4th, carving out some time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good, thank you. Member Brindle.
I just have a couple of things. There have been a couple of changes of ownership of properties on Indian Hills Road that are on Arrowhead Lake. So Wayne, I'm just letting you know, there's going to be a call just for information about the pump and how that works. I know there's a homeowners association around that lake for the purpose of how homeowners handle the lake and manage it. And, and one of the new owners owns the property with the pump, so he would like some information. So I'll, I'll be to you with that. And then I, on May 29th, I attended the Sensible Land Use Coalition meeting and the topic was creating healthy communities and it was Deutown all over again.
It was, but did, did you laugh about what they served for lunch? Because I was about three tables over from you.
Oh, I didn't even see you.
Yeah. They had this really unhealthy lunch and they were talking about how to be in a healthier little.
Was it hamburgers and fries?
Oh, no, it was the smashed potatoes and this chicken fried. Oh, I just had to laugh.
It was the.
Fried steak.
Chicken fried steak.
It was basically, I don't know what this is, but it looks like something I get when I attend lunches like this, you know? It's, it's this on a plate with some of that. And, and, and actually, the Sensible Land Use Coalition, Coalition people do a good job. They do a very good job of educating us and keeping us aware of, of various things so we can, we can take the hotel to task on the lunch, but not Sensible Land Use. But, but I, I did, as I was leaving that day, hear a couple of people say, we got to have better food. So, so we shall see. There were some suggestions. Nonetheless, it was Deutown 201, you know? We had 101 and this was basically 201 and it was, you know, it, it wasn't lost on me, but there was a lot of what was said that was, we've been through it, we've walked it, we've talked it. Some of the, some of the, I, I think, interesting pieces, there were two, two main speakers there and a gentleman from Albert Lee was there. And what he really had to provide were some strategies. And that is where we haven't gotten to yet, but I thought his comments were, were really good. Workplace strategies, planning strategies, coming up with ideas for what's going to be important as you redevelop a, a, a commercial site or a residential site or like we have it with the opportunity in, in Morningside of, of having an area that really is being developed for the first time. And, and some strategies to put in place. But some workplace wellness strategies such as employees. But some workplace wellness strategies, such as employees offering incentives for employers, offering incentives for employees to bike to work, to walk to work, to take transit and bike or walk. And then considering active parking in workplaces, putting in place some active parking opportunities to park a little farther from the door and walk in, or that kind of thing. Adding 10 minutes to a break to incentivize employees to go out and take a walk over break rather than have a donut and get back to your desk. Looking at sedentary meetings, where we all come into a room and sit. And, yeah, sedentary meetings.
Why didn't you tell us to stand up and move around a little bit between public hearings?
We are the experts at sedentary meetings since 5:30. We have sat in a chair. But considering walking meetings and meeting at a site and then during your meeting, you walk and do your discussing during your, during your walk rather than sit around a table. Some areas around the country that he cited for studies, the Better Block concept in Dallas, to take a look at, in Dallas, what does a Better Block consist of? The Bike Boulevard in Winona, evidently Winona has a Bike Boulevard that is a good example. Friendly streets, going to Google and finding out what Google considers to be a friendly street.
I think a Better Block system in Dallas is like six country western bars per block. Pretty sure about that. You sure that's a healthy community initiative?
Excellent, well, it certainly was mentioned as an idea. But one thing that he also mentioned was the innovation and the pioneer, that the community of Jonathan and that design of a close-knit walkable community, that Jonathan was in the 70s even, I think. And, and looking at what was the vision for that community and seeing what, what we're still trying to accomplish, that maybe we should take a look at that as a case in point. But it was, as with many of their, of their topics, it was well-done. The other speaker was the Minnesota Department of Health, Amber Dahlman, and she had a lot to say about just, you know, choosing to walk rather than hopping in your car to do mundane things that you could do and get some activity from. So that's my report.
Good, thank you. One future event to report on and then a few past things to report out to the council. May 20th is the Edina Ed Fund fundraiser. I think they do a golf outing at Edina Country Club. So if someone's interested in supporting the Ed Fund in the community, I'm sure you can get ahold of them. Find their, just Google their address and you'll be able to communicate with them. Let's see here, last Friday night, they had the Southdale Y Gala. Member Sprague is still on the Board of Directors over at the Y. We had about 200 people at the Sofitel. And it was a good turnout, and I think it was a successful night for the Y. It seemed like people were really supportive and there was some good money raised for a very good organization. Before I went to the Southdale Y Gala, I went to Guys Night hosted by Jerry O'Brien and some other people. They had Chris Coleman, the Mayor of St. Paul, come over to talk to their little get-together group. So I stopped there to give him an introduction to Edina folks and then took off for the On the 29th, I went on a hard hat tour of the Veep facility that's under construction on about 96th and Lyndale, I would say, down in that neighborhood. It's going to be a shared facility of about 30,000 square feet, if memory serves me right, between the county social services and then Veep's organization. So that should be done, I don't know, six, eight months from now. And then on the 30th, Laurie Severson from the Chamber and I were downtown for a mainstreaming exports meeting. And then she reported out, Manager Neal, on the event that you and Laurie hosted here in Edina, where we're using Edina as a pilot project for trying to build our export strategies. And people were really keen to hear about her report and the success so far in Edina. I think it's, they're very, very pleased about what's going on. Then on the 30th, we also had the volunteer recognition reception at Braemar, really well-attended, just a great, a great evening. All kinds of wonderful volunteers recognized from organizations and also through the city, through the mayor's recognitions. Want to thank Laurie Sepola for doing the garden basics education for the community gardens. He's had two classes now for people on community gardening. He's a master gardener and I ran into him, I think at the Y fundraiser, and he said, we need more space for gardens. So that's something we need to maybe charge the park board with this summer, looking at other alternative spaces, because he said we're going to be able to really expand this community garden concept. On Saturday, the 27th, did highway cleanup with a bunch of folks from Rotary. I like to clean up right below City Hall. That's my neck of the woods for cleanup. And it gets pretty frustrating when you come by later in the day and there's trash back out there again. It's really aggravating. On the 25th, the Minneapolis Heart Institute had their open house. They're in that medical building down on Centennial Lakes, and they've taken over basically an entire floor down there with their, their Heart Institute operations out of Abbott Northwestern. So we have another good cardiac group in town, and they've got a lot of things that they can, that they can do down there that I was quite surprised at, so. And they're really keen about having a facility in Edina, which they expect will serve much of western and southwestern Minnesota, as well as the southwest metro. Quite interesting. And then the 23rd, backing up to the 23rd, met with the governor, the MLC cities. About 12 mayors went over and met with the governor for about an hour on different topics. He seemed to be receptive on one that would be really helpful to us, and that is not charging cities, not making cities pay sales tax on the purchases that they make, which would save us about $500,000 a year, which we could turn into property tax relief in part, or something else. Capital Improvement Plan. We've got some ideas there, anyway. And we'll see what happens at the legislature on a variety of different topics. So we covered probably half a dozen topics with them. And let's see, that is it for me. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. We are experiencing some post-project completion, construction issues in the Richmond Hills project from last year. We are fortunate that our engineering staff and the contracted staff from SCH are on top of it. They've begun to figure out with Paldah, the contractor, what some of the issues are. And they've had some dips in the road, some dips in the right-of-way. So they're figuring those things out. Paldah, we've got a warranty period with Paldah. So there, Paldah's been notified, they're going to be doing these repairs. And we'll be having some, we'll be having contact with residents about that as well. But I just wanted to let you know that.
Sinkholes, is that what you?
There's some, there is some sinking. I don't know if I would call it a sinkhole yet.
How many areas on the road are we talking about? So many people call us. Are we looking at two, three more?
There's two, two to three that are what I would consider major, and actually, they're going to be repairing those right away. They've actually been, we're out in the field yesterday, making sure that they weren't sinkholes, that they weren't, that you didn't have a void below them. So they're, be bringing out some, cutting those out, putting some asphalt in it. And then there's another five areas that are, we're seeing some settlement in the roadway itself, and then just a couple in the Boulevard areas. Very unusual. We've, I haven't seen that in my time, in my careers, with that type of settlement. They've had that of, quite a few years ago, on a, on a different project, they had some settlement occur. But this is a firm that's been around for 68 years, and their contract's been around for 68 years. And they're, they said they are absolutely going to make sure that we're satisfied with the work that they're doing. So we know about it, we're on it. They'll, they'll make, make sure that it's safe to drive on right now, and then we'll, we'll continue to monitor through the summer, and then towards the end of the summer, we'll, we'll make the, all the major repairs.
So we don't know if it was a bad mix, or?
No, it's actually not the mix, it's the subgrade soil below it. And sometimes when, especially in a neighborhood or an area that you have a.
A lot excavated in it.
Yep. And you have a lot of different type of soil types, too. And so you really get into the soil mechanics and those types of things. It met all the specifications and it, and our specifications are based off of the industry MINDOT specs and things. So that's what's the baffling part at this point. But like I say, we're continuing, we'll be monitoring it weekly and make sure that we stay on top of it, so.
We have been working on something and begun to make, we've been working on a project, I don't know if I'll call it a project or not, maybe an initiative, where we have been looking at how we have been providing IT services for auxiliary organizations over the last few years. Auxiliary organizations like the Crime Fund and like the Historical Society and the Senior Center and the Foundation, and, excuse me, not the Senior Center, but the Edina Community Foundation. And trying to get a sense of, of what are we doing for, what are we doing for these organizations? Are we doing the same thing? Are we doing a variety of different things? So we've begun to meet with them now and to tell them that we're going to begin to, we're going to begin to kind of ratchet some of those services back and offer them, to them for a fixed cost. The reason, and we're not going to be implementing this until the January 1 time period, so if they, they've got it, they've got time to ask us for more money to fund their services, if that's the way they want to go about it. They've got time to decide if they want to do something different for IT services, but we've been interacting with them, and so I want you to know that. I'm going to be speaking at the League of Women Voters event on Thursday night. So if you've got nothing to do, it's, you'll be there.
What's the food?
You're not going to be there? It's the thing that they usually serve with the other things, right?
I'm sorry, I'm busy.
Okay. I'm sure it'll be good. The Gulf Dome, you know, it was, we had the Gulf Dome project on the consent agenda tonight. You approved it. Those were the bid packages and the quote packages we need to get that project moving forward. So you've taken a big step for that project tonight. And we still anticipate that that thing will be ready to golf in November 1st. Finally, I am a Twitterer now. So if you want to follow me.
You're tweeting.
I'm tweeting, yeah.
Glad you added those last two syllables.
You can follow me at Edina.
Is that what?
No, I'm not a twit. I was being very careful not to say that. You can follow me at Edina City Man, and you can learn lots of interesting things.
Oh, you're Edina City Man?
Uh-huh.
I'm Edina Josh. How many followers you got?
39.
Not like the Pope?
No, not like the Pope.
Fair enough.
How many followers do you have?
I don't know, 500? I don't know.
I've got to work on it. So anyway, there's lots of interesting things you can find by following me as on Twitter. There you go.
Edina City Man.
Very good, all right. We've got a little HRA business to do, so we stand adjourned on the city council meeting. And now we will call to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Brindle.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Here.
Commissioner Swenson.
Here.
Chair, have one.
Here. We've got a form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose say nay, carried. And then we have some minutes here, too. Edina Housing Redevelopment Authority minutes for April 16, 2013.
So moved.
Discussion. All those in favor of adopting the HRA minutes for April 16, 2013, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose say nay, carried. And then we have a action item in front of us. Engineering Services for the Promenade Phase IV. And Manager Neal, you're going to handle this?
Yes, I am, Your Honor. I think at least one of you have an agenda that has A, B, and C on it, that there's no C anymore. This is the only item that's on the agenda tonight. This isn't the exciting act on this particular issue to take. This is the approval of an engineering services agreement with URS Corporation to begin, to begin the exciting part of the Promenade Phase IV, and that's the design, the concept review. What we're asking you for tonight is to approve the engineering services design agreement so that we can begin the Phase IV design process. This is, this is one of those projects that has always been intended to be paid for from the Centennial Lakes TIP District, and that is what we would propose to do.
All right. Good. Questions for Manager Neal?
Yes, Your Honor. How did we end on URS? How did we find this particular venue?
I believe that is who has designed the other phases. Is that correct?
So there's history?
Yeah. If you look, Member Sprague, a third person down in the architect planner category, this is Arise Pecans.
Okay.
He is a fellow that did all the design work at Centennial Lakes with the bridges and the walkways from the mid-'80s. He's the original designer. He's.
And we've done that for a reason.
Lithuanian or Latvian.
We wanted to be consistent.
Really interesting guy.
It's nice to have, have the history, though. Continuity. Okay, thanks.
Okay, entertain a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve those engineering services using URS. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose say nay, carried. And any other business for the HRA? All right, HRA stands adjourned.